... PM on our open hearing, present the chapter 501, Texas Government Code. All of this has been posted properly. We have a quorum with Sherbrooke hanging on video. We will open up the city council meeting first with invitation and pledge, and then we're going to sit in the comments.
Shout out to Gray. Dear heavenly Father, please come to you today, dear Lord, thanking you for all the many blessings you have bestowed upon us, dear Lord. We just pray that everything we say and do will honor and glorify you. Thank you for this beautiful wedding that we're having, dear Lord, and just bless everybody as they return to their residences, dear Lord. Just keep them safe. We ask all of this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the integrity of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. So before we get started with citizen comments, I'm going to ask the chief of the council to come up real quick and just make an announcement about this thing.
To the form of the body of government, the citizens of Gunter, I just ask you to have and keep the Valdez family in your thoughts and prayers. We lost a brother in blue firefighter from the Plano Fire Department this morning, early this morning. He had a heart attack and passed away on the way to Medical City in McKinney. And so he leaves behind his sons and a daughter that still goes to school here in Gunter. They live in the Woods community. So just please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And I think the Gunter Fire Department and the Gunter Police Department have our flags, hats, masks, so just please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to start with citizen comments. We'll have three minutes. This section is for you to talk about anything that's not on the agenda. If you want to talk about an agenda item, we'll call you up during that time, so you can talk before or during. So I'll just talk about during. If you have to go, and you want to go down to citizen comments, you're welcome to do that as well. So I'm going to start calling out the citizen comments. First is Chris Donohue.
Yeah, I just had questions to leave behind here for the council. So, and I can, I'd asked if I could leave these behind because I don't expect people to take all the notes that I have here for questions. It's all about the agenda items here. First, I just want to know if the council feels fully informed regarding the future land use map or the proposal to extend the ETJ. Because in May, the council was strongly criticized for voting prematurely on agenda items, so I would encourage discussion on the future land use map tonight, but encourage the council to table the vote for later date. This will allow for the education of the council, input from the council on the future land use map, input from the P&amp;Z committee members on the future land use map, and opportunity for community members to voice concerns, opinions, support, or objections. Likewise, I would like to know if the council feels fully informed on the benefits and possible consequences of extending the ETJ, and what the motivation is for the expansion. Again, it's just a question. I'm not assigning any motivation one way or the other, I just don't know. And again, for the same reasons, I would encourage the discussion this evening, but I would ask for the vote to be tabled for a later date for the same reason, so that it can be input into the approval or disapproval of that from citizens. I'd like to understand what the development director position is to be. I understand the need for the finance director. I believe that we should also immediately post interview and hire a police chief and city administrator, because these positions are immediate needs. And finally, I'd like to voice strong support in favor of a severance package for Jeff Gibson. We should do our best to part ways amicably with Jeff. Thank you. Can I leave these with the council?
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Davisell.
Since May, we've seen revelations of much of what the city council has been involved with and hid and continues to hide from the public. Many of these activities were only brought to light by our mayor and other concerned citizens, none of them by the aldermen. The aldermen have, as a body, accomplished absolutely nothing that is in the best interest of the city of Gunter. Instead, the aldermen have shown pettiness, vindictiveness, and dishonesty that has only delayed any hope of progress in our city. For example, the aldermen have thwarted again and again the return of the city mayor, mayor city council form of government. Like it or not, the people voted and Prop A passed. The people that you serve made that decision. It is your job, it is your duty to comply with what the people have determined is in the best interest of the city of Gunter. It is not your job to pursue things that are in your best interest. It is your job to pursue the things, it's not your job to pursue things that make you feel better, and it's certainly not your job to spend my money on pet projects. You will find fulfilling that you find fulfilling or rewarding. Furthermore, you have no individual power to berate, admonish, or confront any city employee. Your power only exists as a body. Some of you have behaved atrociously. You have created a hostile and confrontational work environment that by itself disqualifies you as a member, a useful member of the body, and you should apologize and resign as you were unfit for your role. There's been abuse of power, a violation of trust, and you're in dereliction of duty. And I would recommend that you resign. You'll be replaced in May's way. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Gallagher.
I'm going to thank you for taking some of my thunder. My name is Mike Gallagher, 1621 Carston Ridge Court. I agree with everything he just said. I would like to say, I retired from American Airlines. I was a crew chief. I had a job to do whether I liked the person that was on my crew or not. I had to make sure everything was correct. You all need to stop acting like babies. You need to work together, and Mayor, I don't know you that well, but this includes you. All of you need to work together. This is our home, this is our city, it's our tax dollars that you need to take care of. And, I don't know, I saw the guy was up here earlier. I wasn't going to say nothing, but a severance package? When he gets manager pay, chief pay, and drives around in the city in the police car, I think he got a little bit of severance before he left. And that's all I'm going to say really.
Ashley Hawkins.
Hi, my name is Ashley Hawkins. I live at 1650 McCombe Road. I just want to touch up on two things. The first thing I do want to touch up is that I was one of the citizens that dropped a cake to Deidra in the middle of the week to thank her after the first, sorry, let me rephrase, the second canvassing, because it was brought to the citizens' attentions that did attend the canvassing, that she had to leave her family trip to come back to post the second canvassing online so we could meet the deadline. And as an appreciation, I took my money and gave her a cake for her and her family for thanking her for her time. And I know Deidra has had a very hard year. For those that know, you know why, and for those that don't, she has been, I don't know you personally, Deidra, I just know you from when you come to meetings, because that's what interests you. So I thank you for your service to the community and the work that you do and how you go above and beyond your title, even as a job description, you do more than that's asked of you. My second topic, I'm sorry, okay, is I'm strongly against interim Jeff Gibson. In case you don't know what the word interim means, the noun is the intervening time, the adverb is meanwhile, okay, which does not require a contract from the city for a temporary position that he agreed to, then forfeited his police chief title. With that being said, why are we even discussing a temporary severance package or a package of any sort for someone who is currently a non-employed? With that being said, why is he even in executive session, Section B 551074? The term at the bottom says for employee. Again, he is not. He is a previous employee. So he does not seem to be in executive session. If he is, this is a use of the, I would say, the chapter, the local government code with that. So thank you for your time. I think he should not, if this discussion is going to be had, it should be had in public.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Jim Lindstrom, 419 Autry. I've only got a couple of things today. One, there's a lot of talk about transparency. It was one of the campaign hot buttons in the, excuse me, in the Merrill old campaign. With all these changes that have taken place in the last month, not one announcement, not one notification from the city on any one of these changes. Nothing on the letterhead, nothing on the official site, everything relegated to being pushed to social media, which not everybody is on. Do better. The second one is developers. Apparently, there's developers have been calling the city repeatedly, repeatedly, and with no calls back to them. Ones complained that they've called eight to 10 times now, and nobody calls them back.
Did you name that person?
No, I will not name the person. Thank you.
Because it's not true.
So if there's actual information, I have not received any calls to know a person not in return. I know that's what we're on social media, it's not true.
That's why you have official announcements.
Well, don't believe everything on social media.
Mr. Anderson is next. Can we...
I don't know if I can finish in three minutes.
I'm trying to leave. You will have a opportunity to mark the speaker later.
Yeah, I'll try to do it. All right. My name is Rick Anderson. I'm in 209 West San Francisco. March of 2001, well, first of all, I've been in Gunter for 10 years now. I moved here because I thought it was the safe place. The people were nice, I had friends here. So, March of 2001, I had posted on Facebook that I had temperature, like I posted my thermometer. I was at 103, then 104. And I got antibiotics, but when I came home, I didn't get a chance to use them because it collapsed on my bedroom floor, and I didn't actually get up at all. And so my friends know that I usually text back, like immediately when they text me. And I had just texted my friend birthday text the day before. They ended up calling in a wellness check on March 21st, 2021. Before that, I was in perfect health. I mean, not perfect, but at least I wasn't in a wheelchair at that point in time. Anyway, so he called in a wellness check. The, apparently the police came on the scene, knocked on the door, maybe went around, and there was no, my neighbor, my neighbor actually offered to go to the landlord and get a key so they could get in, but they proceeded to drive away anyway. And so, and I think they came twice, and nobody ever tried to get in, but my neighbor offered a key. I ended up being on the floor for three days. My friend ended up, they never called my friend to ask to tell them what was going on. My friend called three days later to see what was going on, and I'm thankful to Officer Satri, because he was the one that actually got me out. And by the time they found me, I was in sepsis. I had necrotizing fasciitis go up the entire side of my body, left side. And by the time I got to the hospital, I was, they pronounced me dead. So, luckily, I'm alive now. But the doctor said that if the first officer had actually gotten me out of there, it would have been two weeks without antibiotics, I would have locked down the front door. And so, my, where I'm at now is I'm about $5 million in for, it took him 27 surgeries to keep my leg and to reconstruct my leg. I had a business, RV rental business that's still ongoing. I was in a coma for, well, I was in the hospital for a year. I was in a coma for half of that, and I lost my RV business, obviously, because, so that's the, I was in a relationship before all of this, and that was fine at first, but my son was so upset by the fact that he thought I was dead, that he ended up coming to my house and committing suicide, or trying to anyway. And so, so I lost all, I lost, we were going to get a house, I lost my credit, I lost my money in savings, because while I was in the hospital, I had to kind of keep things going, but I've lost every vehicle I had, I've lost my relationship, because having to call in the suicide attempt was pretty heavy. So, so my thing is, is I haven't been able to, I called Gibson, Officer Gibson, and he said that he was trying to protect my privacy, and I don't understand that at all. And so, I know that it's not, I know in the state law, the police are only like, have to like knock and then call, but I just want to know what the city policy is as far as having a wellness check, because I don't think there's anyone in this room that would want to have to worry about the police not actually getting someone out if there's a concern. And I've lost like way too much. And the reason why I'm here is not for myself, even though there's no way, I mean, I don't know how to get restoration, but I'm really here for the next person, because I don't want the same person to go to another community and have something happen and have that person actually die. I couldn't, I couldn't live with that if I did that if I didn't say something. So that's why I'm here today. I mean, there's more to that, but it's just like, I've lost a lot, and seeing someone get paid double and asking for a severance package, I can't see that when I can't even get, I feel like the city failed me, maybe by policy, maybe by person, I'm not sure, but I see no chance of restoration, and it seems like we're basically giving him like way more than he should get. So, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. That is something that chief of the council needs to address. Thank you. I have one more, Ms. Myron.
Sorry, I had a water glass. As blind people. My name is Davita Myron. I live at 116 West Plummins Drive in the Woods. I would like to say something about item five and item seven. Proposition A was voted on by the citizens of Gunter. The votes for Prop A, one on the ballot. It is not appropriate for the city council to blatantly ignore the voice of the citizens, once again proving that they have their own agenda and will continue to create havoc, costing the city money due to their individual personal claim agenda. There should not be any resistance to approve Prop A, especially since the government of Gunter nor the citizens of Gunter had anything to do with the tabulation of the votes and the data. And there should not be any resistance, the citizens have spoken. Item 12, discussing the employment evaluation duties, disqualient or dismissal of public officers on, or I'm sorry, hearing complaints, charges against officer employees. One, mayor, this council has proven to be pedulant children dressed as a ghost, impeding at every turn the mayor from performing the job the citizens put her in office to handle. Deidra has been a very dedicated employee to the city of Gunter. She has gone above and beyond to perform her job and only her job. This includes leaving her family while on vacation four hours away, to return to the city of Gunter and perform a duty that should not have been necessary. How disappointing it must be for the citizens that voted for the council people into office today, only to see the council people spitting on them, the mayor and the city. Item 13, discussion of a severance package. The Gunter police chief was given the opportunity to stay as the interim city manager. He chose an interim police chief to fill his then-vacant slot and remained as the interim city manager. Proposition A passed, and the interim city manager's position was effectively phased out. Unless the city of Gunter has an HR rule that an employee whose job has been phased out will receive a severance package, then severance is not due to this individual. Also, upon employee's departure, the following actions should be taken. All financial expenditures covered by the city should be audited. Personal expenses charged to the city, mileage charged to the city but accrued for personal use, city equipment returned in a condition commensurate to when first issued to the employee. Any monies due to the city should include, but not limited to, personal expenses paid for by the city, mileage on the city's vehicle attributed to personal use, any expenses needed to return the city's equipment/vehicle to a standard acceptable by the city. All expenditures and monies found to be for personal use should be withheld from any monies owed the employee or repaid to the city immediately without delay. Thank you.
So, that concludes the citizen comments. We're going to open up the public hearing at 6:27. For the beautiful comments regarding the proposed plan of the city's land use map. Jeff, anybody else who wants to leave that, or Mr. Donohue's comments? Is there anyone else who wants to leave the land use map? Okay, so we're going to close this hearing at 6:27. We're going to move on to discussing the adoption of the proposed plan of the city's land use map. So, I want to start with saying, we, this future land use map is actually on the east west side for years. It's really something I wish I adopted a long time ago. It just tells us what we want to do within the city and the planning areas of the ETJ, what our plan is. This is a map that's going to change as we grow, maybe every three to five years or so. It's not forever, but this is what we want to, it's our vision of right hand, what we want to do with the land, what our vision is. So, I don't know, I'm going to put that up for discussion between the aldermen, if he has any commitment, he feels like he needs to share it with the engineer, but this map is almost out of control of the ladies that have access to 2020.
The only thing I would say is, it's really part of the comprehensive plan, it's part of that. It's really part of the city's comprehensive plan, it's a part of that. Just take a piece of that, I mean, this vision for the city versus personal uses on there or not, I'm going to produce it. So, I understand the comment about getting people's input, if you like, you can do that, but if you don't, that's on its side.
I checked into Salinas Land Use Map, and Gunter adopted one in, I think, 2019, before I was on the council. I do recall going to meetings, there were several public hearings, there was community input, P&amp;Z did have a part in that, the city manager at the time had a part in that, the city planner, actually, I don't think we have a city planner, we have a consistent city manager to hear from, and they had a part in that. And I think the process took maybe close to six months, I can't say that for sure, but it was a lengthy process. I asked about city Salinas, and theirs took close to a year, and they had committees that participated, stakeholders that had input, and they had input from all of their boards and their community members, and I'm not quite sure why we didn't do that. And I'm confused as to why the ETJ has potential zoning on it only in the northeast corner and not in the rest of it. The concern for me is that by doing that, that is a smoking gun for BNSF to say, you're targeting us because you're looking at ETJ just in our area, and you're saying what you want that to be, and not in any other part of the ETJ. It gives them reason to say that you're targeting us and you're not doing this to the rest of the landowners in the ETJ. I just don't think that that's very wise for us to do, and even if that wasn't part of it, I think that this is something that the community should have input in, and every other city does it that way.
This is not directly zoning. This is just establishing what we would like to use the land for, a vision of land usage. It is not zoning, correct, Danny?
I understand that. I also understand what that is saying for Salinas and everybody else. I'm just saying that in the ETJ, in the northeast corner, that it only addresses, and I did say proposed usage of that, and it doesn't address proposed usage in the ETJ for other parts.
I'm not sure what the objection is other than to delay. This is something that needs to be redone. We don't have one right now.
We do have one right now. I am in agreement that it needs to be redone. I have no problem with redoing it. We need to have a comprehensive plan. This needs to be part of the comprehensive plan. I don't argue at all with the fact that we need to do this, and we've already discussed the fact, the need for, I'm just saying that the process was rushed and it didn't include community participation.
We just had a hearing on video post. This is not the entire community. It was posted online. Everybody was asked, this is something that can be changed in a way that we want to. It can be changed against the concept we want to. There's no harm in adopting what's been on the east west side for three years. It's like you want to prevent this.
Well, it's just funny, when you choose to get something, you need input, and when you choose not to.
If you have any luck to speak to this agenda item, please come to the podium. But I can't have you on the seat.
Don Anderson, 102 Falls Creek Lane. This is just a proposal, what we view for the land usage. We've got some, if you look at the next item, we've got some people that are going to be requesting to be annexed in. That being the case, we're just saying this is what we'd like to see the land used for. It's been made perfectly clear over the past year that you, Connie, want BNSF here. So you will be pushing for BNSF. So, what objection can you have on us figuring out this is the kind of land use that we want, is residential?
Anything else?
Angie Rich, 1394 Piper. Connie, I just want to ask you directly, since we're having a public discussion, and I'll ask that you please answer. Where was your concern in your notice for the public of great concern? Where was your concern and your notice for the public of great concern when y'all negotiated with BNSF? Did you involve, did you involve the public at that point in time? Because it was such a, wasn't it a concern to you to do that at the time? But now the land use map is a concern? I, I just want to answer.
There was a public hearing for that, and I'm going to say.
When was the public hearing with BNSF?
I'm going to say that in hindsight, we should have had a workshop. And we didn't do that.
Did, did you notify publicly? Did you post notice? That, that was being resented, reannexed, a consideration? It didn't go, did it go through the EDC? Did it go through the P&amp;Z before it went to you for a vote? Did any of that happen, yes or no?
It didn't go to the EDC.
No, did it, it's not an agenda. There's not one agenda that has BNSF. We've already looked, Connie.
I'm going to need to talk about two different things. You're asking about the agreement and.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking since the public wasn't really, it wasn't a concern for public input for her negotiation of BNSF, and she's bringing BNSF saying that we're penalizing them based on this land use map.
No, I did not say we're penalizing them. I'm saying we're giving them.
You just said that.
We're giving them a loaded gun because we are targeting them in this map. And so they can take this and say we are untargetable targeting them.
Well, you, you just took those, that purpose into their, into your, out the public. No one, no one is even suggesting that except you.
I don't have to put that into the public for BNSF to see that.
I just, I, I just want you to find me an agenda that you are so concerned about public input right now for a land use map. I want to know from you, and I want the agenda, any agenda with BNSF on it before May eighteenth.
You were correct, Jonathan.
Oh, there you go.
It was not a, it was not a April agenda.
So you bypassed all ordinance and laws and procedures to get that agreement signed, but now you want to follow the rules all of a sudden or follow ethical protocol?
What's your objection? I understand.
Only one, only one, please.
I have more. Do I have more time to speak?
We're going to have a discussion.
Are you, are you going to have, are you going to have discussion for another hour?
Yes.
Okay, I can.
The statute says that any citizen can discuss an agenda item before ordering that items, discussion. So.
Thank you.
We can't do that, but how that has to get everybody respectful tonight. And respectful of your words and conversation, so that we can have open discussions. Yes, each item, on each one.
Thank you. But I'm just going to close by saying that you can't pick and choose what you want the public input on or notification to the public. You can't pick and choose your balance, Connie. It's supposed to be out and transparent for the entire community. So you can't pick and choose your agenda.
There should be another page of citizen comments, because I was on a page.
Uh, okay, so when we, one second, sorry, I'm going to. When we, um. So we are, we're going to have your agenda right after the special hearing, so hold on a minute. Yes, I do have Emily on number two, and then I'll look through these. Have you signed it on agenda item or?
No, citizen comments.
Just in general that are on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Angie's on there, I'm on there.
I only have the two sheets.
I, Angie and then me, and I said Angie has my business and then.
I had two, but we went to those. That was Ms. Myron and then.
Angie Rich, Field Rich and. It's the citizen comments, but it was before by the door.
Okay, so, are you wanting to talk about something not on the agenda?
I gave Angie my time.
Okay.
I haven't signed up on different items, but you can, that I'll be allowed.
So, on, on an agenda item, you can, you can come up before ordering. So I will, each agenda item, I will probably open it if you access it. I'll open it and I'll tell anybody else who wants to step up. You can wait, you didn't get a chance to.
I was here at five thirty.
Number twelve, you can come up, number twelve comes up, so push forward. Um, okay, so Emily, you did sign up for this one on number two.
My name's Emily Bates, one-one-five-four, Carstens Ridge Pass. I'm also a member of the P&amp;Z board. And so, excuse me, I've got junk in my throat. Um, my concern when I first saw this proposed map, my eye immediately went to the area of BNSF as well. And my thought was why is this zoned residential? It, it didn't make sense to me, and being on P&amp;Z, I was wondering how will this affect my role on that board? And is it, is what's on this map in any way binding or legally binding in any way? And I asked that to you, our attorney.
This map can be changed as often as we want to change it. This is just part of our comprehensive plan. It does not set in stone zoning. Now, as far as BNSF, we do not have an agreement with any org, this has been terminated. So I want everybody to understand that. They don't have any vested rights to anything. So we're not doing something wrong by establishing our vision for that area that they, they own. It would be a little different if I went down there, pressed on the land, and I have these big dreams of doing something with it, and the city comes in, and I don't know what's going on. The city comes in and resents it something, and I go, oh my God, I wanted to build home there. And they're telling me it's commercial now. They have, the city has the right to do that, until they don't. Until I already have the land. Yes, I guess you could say, um, they don't have vested rights if I'm already operating or presenting a home, you're already residential, you're in the home, you own it, that's yours. The city can't help them to resell that project because your grandma did it. So we're just trying to set what we want for our future. It's unfluent. We need to change it as development comes. We may decide that we want something.
She's making a phone call.
Mayor, mayor, I don't know. Can you get council members to act like you're all. That's me.
I think it's something to do.
You can tell.
Okay, sorry.
So, everybody, we've got to be respectful tonight. We have to. This is how we're going to be able to communicate. Um, I mean, it's good to, to go back and work with. This is good governance, where we don't have to run everything. It's a good thing. Um, we have to be respectful to each other, we've got to hear each other out. If somebody asks somebody a question, it's okay to comment on that question. Um, but let's be respectful, and let's do it from the podium. And then if anybody up here would like to answer Emily's questions, then you can all in. You know. Of course, it's your discussion, of course.
I'd like to say that I understand Emily's concerns. If I were a new city owner of P&amp;Z and something was passed that had been not passed before, and I was a new eager member who wants to be particularly involved with what's taking place here, then they should at least have the opportunity to review it before we take action. I, I think that that's the logical thing to do, and that's just my opinion.
I agree. I, I don't understand why it wasn't brought to, to P&amp;Z just for at least input or.
I think it only because it's been on the website for so many years that it hasn't been done.
I haven't seen a previous, you said some things had changed, right?
Not much, not much.
I haven't.
A little more residential.
Is there some urgency to this, to be not step back just a minute and at least consider a, a procedure of allowing P&amp;Z to become involved in this process? Since that is their dedicated duty? Their new.
This isn't, this isn't zoning.
Right, right. I'm just, I'm just like, still, I think when we have.
I, I don't know, P&amp;Z, but also, for example, EDC. If you look at this land that goes on the tollway, um, almost all of that is zoned residential. Nobody would put residential up against the tollway. That should be.
That's impossible.
It's financial, it's financial, um, suicide. You know, and, and I, and even on Crescent Road, if you look beyond the part that is now currently, all of that is, is commercial. You would want that to be, I mean, sorry, residential, you want it to be. And the entire downtown is, the entire downtown is, um, is, um, is commercial.
And let's be respectful of something, Connie. As you, if you need to talk this out for a minute, this is just. We need to be respectful of time and this conversation here.
Okay, I, I'm good. I just want to, as a P&amp;Z member, I would like to say this should be tabled and we should continue to have some more discussion on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Short comment. So, in May, when the BNSF agreement was passed and there was such an uproar, I made a comment, I don't think to all the council members, but individually to most of you, maybe four of you, that I thought that any major decision like this in the future ought to be immediately tabled so that the, the community could be aware of it, that they could hear the initial discussion and have the extra time for the input. So, I think seeing you guys learn from this, it's unfair to hit the council on both sides. That if they didn't, if they rushed the BNSF agreement, that's fine. Um, if you want to disagree with that, and I, I completely understand that. No one's, no one is for BNSF. But then we can't beat them up on the other side when they want to take more time to consider this. So, it feels like we're hitting them on both sides by criticizing them, you know, no matter what decision they make. Thank you.
Mark Merrill, seventy-one Mallard Court. I have a question for the council members about the master plan for the city. When was the last master plan adopted? Can anyone of y'all tell me? You do have one, because there's one required by state law. I know, because I had to pass one when I was mayor. That's eleven years ago. So if it hasn't been updated in eleven years, that's already passed the state's requirement of a ten-year mandate. Number one. Number two, you made a comment earlier about nobody wanting to live next to the tollway. I have news for you. Starwood in Frisco, the second most expensive neighborhood in the city, backs up to the tollway. Dallas, the tollway runs right next to the most expensive neighborhood in the city of Dallas, in Highland Park. Okay, so let's get real about where we're going to put things and why we're going to put them there. The mayor's asking for the council to consider and act upon adopting a map that can be updated at any time as a protection, as a preemptive strike, as bringing the fight to the people that we are in a fight with to save our city. If you can't see that, you've got blinders on, okay? You say that you don't want BNSF here, but at every turn from the history that I've looked at, that's all you want. There, by your own admission, prior to May eighteenth, there was no public notice of any P&amp;Z meeting, of any hearing, of any public comment of any kind about negotiations with BNSF. So my question is, how did the city council get authorization when the city has procedures in place that the P&amp;Z, the EDC, and others make recommendations to this panel prior to taking action? You took action, but there was no prior, uh, consideration, public notification, or anything else that went with it. You adopted a, a plan development agreement, agreed to it five to zero, and pushed it through as quickly as you could with as little notification as possible. How is this even possible? How? You didn't follow your own ordinances. You know, plain and simple. You did not follow your own ordinances. I would contend it's a violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act that you did this action without properly notifying the public, without having a public discussion, and taking action without doing either one. So my question is, where are we now? Why are you opposed to something that can be changed at the drop of a hat? When you weren't opposed to putting something in writing that couldn't be changed unless BNSF wanted it changed? The agreement that the council authorized and signed gave up every right the city had to defend itself. Every right, every one of them. Are you protecting BNSF? Or are you protecting the citizens in the city of Gunner?
I promise I'm not going to beat you up, but I'm going to use one of your terms. Smoking gun. You know what a smoking gun is? That stupid rail yard that's going to be in our backyard. Anybody in service before? You know what service guys do? They go towards that shit. That thing is the biggest mistake that you guys ever made. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Monesta, under nineteen twenty-one, Bloods Road. I've been here a couple times now and just moved here to Gunner. Uh, we have a home built out there that we started building in February. It's been honestly a shame to see what's going on in this town after what we picked. This town out of thirty-one places that we visited over a course of a week when we were making our choice. Um, I feel like we're going a little bit round in circles on this. I'd like to recommend, and you can take that for what it is, that we move forward what the map is, for now, because if there was work put into it, it sounds like you outlined, you know, some level of work that went into it, and that there be a plan that we review that very shortly with input from the P&amp;Z, from the community, to look at what, how it needs to change. And that should be reviewed on a regular basis. If you come into the town, I don't know if y'all know, but there's this sign that talks about how local Gunner is and its master plan for growth, development, and family, and et cetera. And it sounds like we have not been living up to our advertisement. So I'd like to ask that we start doing that, um, because this is a really great place. It's a very good community. When I tell my friends and my coworkers that I moved to Gunner, they have really great things to say. But when I came here, I have to say I'm slightly disappointed with how things are turning out. And I think that we have an opportunity to turn things around. And as a leader myself, for a very large company, leading a very large team, sometimes we need to take a step back and realize when we've screwed up, we've made a mistake, and then we need to course correct. And what I'm seeing is a lot of behavior that is continuing to just dig in, and that is not good leadership. I think you guys can do better.
My name is Ashley Hocken, sixteen fifty McConnell Road. My question is with regarding this map and Connie states that it can possibly, like, they can come in because we're doing something, like, is that in a way what we're trying to do? Going to protect the citizens by changing this map a certain way? By the residential up on that top corner, can that help protect us with BNSF? Or any potential industrial growing that direction if we adopt this and then temporarily re-change it as needed, if we realize that it's not really helping or we do want the gruff to go that way towards residential?
I mean, this is our vision. We don't have to answer to anybody. This is their legislative ability to set the vision moving forward. We aren't under agreement. Of course we can do this. Is everybody opposed to more residential and agriculture?
Nope.
I mean, I'm just curious. We can change the next one if somebody decides opposite, but I, I don't know why when we have an opportunity to set a foundation that we refuse to do it. I just, I don't understand an objection to that.
So it sounds to me like it could benefit the community against industrial coming that way from the, um, market.
Something we should decide or ask permission of the BNSF will be wanting to do with the land.
Yeah.
My comment is short and sweet. We're asking you to pass an ordinance to change the future. I'd like each one of you to go read item three, because as soon as we approve item three, it's gonna change that map anyway. So, do it right. Change the ordinance. It can be updated, because three is gonna change it anyway. Thank you.
Real quick comment. Uh, my name's John Todd, two thousand and four Foxman Trace. I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Connie made, but it's directed to our city attorney. Connie's comment was, we're throwing it right back in the face of Burlington Northern. My question to you is, if we pass this tonight, does that put us in any legal jeopardy with what we're passing?
Burlington, I will say it's a community-wide standard. It applies to all the properties that are located on there, not just one single tract.
So, no.
I'm answering the question, I'm thinking less, if I can.
Well, I'm not sure I'm answering the answer. It's a yes or no question. Does it put us in any legal jeopardy?
Yes, it is. And that's really, it's subject to attorney-client communication, that I would like to have the council members, if they want to, not necessarily the public.
Okay. I only got a bachelor's degree, but I don't get...
This applies to everyone citywide, within the ETJ. We're not talking to BNSF.
Well, what I was trying to do, is help, help answer Connie's question, that if we pass this, are we putting ourselves in legal jeopardy with BNSF, by just saying, hey, you know, that property that you guys have, we want it to be residential?
We don't have an agreement. We have legislative mobility that has to do with that.
Connie?
Well, Amy has said that there is need for him to counsel us. Is this something that we can add to tonight's decision?
Why do they need to counsel this as a whole discussion?
Let's do, let's do that.
All right, thank you.
Are you choking me?
Okay. In years, I'll have to hold on for two to after we have our session. Okay, so we're coming back. Did you wanna?
I'm just gonna ask a question. Um, so there's been a distinction between the definition of land use versus zoning. Can you maybe clarify that a little bit for me?
Sure. So, comprehensive...
So, you turned it off.
Okay. The comprehensive, comprehensive plan is really what the description on the, on the agenda says. It's a, it's a future land use plan. It is what the council anticipates and wants the community to be as it grows in the future. It's not necessarily today. It's as you go, year by year by year by year, as of today. It can be changed at any time after a public hearing. Um, zoning is different. So, comprehensive plan is more general, community-wide, including what you plan, including your future territorial jurisdiction. Zoning is very specific to a specific piece of property, according to your zoning ordinance, and what classifications you have in that zoning ordinance. So, and it has different those procedures involving on the property, in the, in the newspaper, and public hearing, for that specific trap. So, it, it generally should, uh, be, be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, I don't know if that clarifies it, but, but there are different, um, different things. And they're both, they're both necessary.
And it is possible to have zoning that conflict, currently conflicts with the future direction of the city?
That does happen. It should not happen, but it does happen.
Thank you.
That's a good, quick question. Quick question, real quick. To the attorney, do we or do we not have an agreement with this friggin' rail system?
We do not.
We do not. So, what is the difference? What we determine, what this land is gonna be around it. If we don't have an agreement with them, what could they do to us?
That's what we're gonna talk about in the executive session, because it could be a good time for our government to do that. So, we definitely don't wanna, um, do anything that jeopardizes the city's position in the future, or lawsuit. So, um, we're gonna move on to it after the executive session, though. So, we're gonna go on to item three. Um, this is to consider a positive action on the ordinance extending our ETJ, um, in response to a petition of landowners. Mr. William Stevens is the attorney who represents the landowners. She is here to present this to us tonight. Um, yes. 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 Um, I'm gonna have an explain real quick, what it is, because, um, William, you wanna, um, this is not, not, this is not something that's related specifically to BNSF. These are landowners who go on to the Dorchester's ETJ. They want to be in our ETJ, because they say in the future, Gunner has so much more to offer. They know they're gonna be in one of the others. So, there, we all, this ETJ talk, twenty thirty-eight petitions, they wanna be here, not there. So, I want you to come briefly explain what, what this is about here.
Good evening, everyone. Swearing. Okay. William Stevens, I'm representing the Strong family. Testing. Is it working now?
Yes.
William Stevens, I'm representing the Strong family and the Normans. They have requested to be released from the ETJ in Dorchester, and they have also made requests to be included in the ETJ in Gunner. That is, landowners are obviously tied to the land. They can't walk away, they can't move. They do have some very limited ability with new legislation to pick who they wanna be associated with. Their choices are Dorchester or Gunner. Even with all the consternation we have now, Gunner seems to be a better pick, and they'd rather be with Gunner.
We have to see Cheryl. Cheryl has to say yes.
Oh, she's gone?
Yes.
There are two requests for ex... There are two requests for expansion of the ETJ. One is a, a series of parcels that are very close to Dorchester, and one's further down. It's already partially in the ETJ. That second one is Lucy Walker and Linda Russell Strong, or Strong Russell. That one can be acted on, if y'all choose to act on it tonight. The other parcels are currently tied up with, with delays from Dorchester. The Strong's, this will be Lucy and Linda, would, would just as soon come in now. Half of their properties are the ends, so you'd just be extending out to the, to the extent of their property.
So, Lucy Walker, just we're gonna ask you, and...
But Lucy and Linda, sorry. Lucy and Strong are sisters, and they own an undivided interest in the property together. What else can I tell you?
So, we could make a motion to allow Lucy Walker's property to come in, because we don't have to wait for Dorchester. The others, we do. We just have to carry on to the next meeting.
That is correct. Come in, is, expanding the ETJ. Yes, you could do, you could do Lucy and Linda's property, and then wait on the other ones.
Uh, discussion, questions, motion, anything?
I have a question. Is the seven hundred and thirty acres specifically allocated currently to the one family that you mentioned, or is that across the multiple families, of which some of them are tied up into Dorchester?
The question was, are the seven hundred and thirty acres, the question was, are the seven hundred and thirty acres tied with...
The one family that we could potentially, they could have potentially approved, or all of the family?
It's within the various parcels.
It's, 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 it's a variety of parcels. There are roughly eight of them, and the only one parcel right now is not contested by any other municipality.
So, Lucy suggests that's what we're in. While we, we, the owners, she would finish their twenty thirty-eight petition, or maybe Dorchester won't have one, or whatever. They all came together, so Lucy wants in generally. It is, those are the options.
What's the size of Lucy's?
Lucy's general hand, you said?
Well, it would be on the petition.
It is in here. Lucy's, um, is petition twenty-nine, uh, seven hundred and seventy?
It's not a significant portion.
And there's no conditions with this annexation, this voluntary annexation?
Well, it's not an annexation, it's an expansion. And by conditions, what do you mean?
Like, it's not conditional on, on anything else. It's just, she wants in on our ETJ and...
Correct.
They all come together and say they're all just living in Dorchester. These people waited for a long time, so I don't know where they're...
Long term, the family does want a development plan. They'd like to have a forty-five decree, forty-five-year promise, that they're gonna stay agricultural if they come in. Obviously, that wouldn't help them much to be coming into the ETJ, and then something happens later, and they, they're not protected to be able to continue to farm. I, I don't think anyone would object to that. Farming is one of the things that makes Gunner different than everywhere else, so we wanna keep the farm. And we, and this is an opportunity for Gunner to set the, the, the tempo, or the mode, about how we go forward, with trying to convince people to join Gunner, because it is marketing now. Cities don't have the ability to go out and just annex wherever they want. You're gonna have to show what you got, and, and ask, convince people why they need to come in. That, that is the, the current reality that we live in. And the old annexations, and the old ETJs, those are anachronisms now. Now, it's time to start figuring out what you can do, and why, why you're gonna do something that, that's attractive to these people to come in.
Are the other portions that we're waiting on, do they have that forty-five-year kind of window as well, in terms of agriculture? Were they requesting that as well?
They have, they would request that, yes.
Um, so, is Miss Walker, is Miss Walker's land, is it currently not in Dorchester's ETJ?
No, it is not. That's why it's not. That's why it's not a contention. There's no issues with it.
And so, why, what's going on in Dorchester that we're...
That's a very good question, and a long answer. If you want the whole answer now, you can talk about that offline. So, so Dorchester originally had been in agreement to let the land out, under some conditions, that we reserve some of it for them to try, to do some of the things that they have planned for. That, that deal fell through this week. They now are requesting that, that Gunner and Dorchester have a, an interlocal agreement. That includes a reversion on the ETJs, if the future projects don't occur. There's some issue about whether we can get that put together in time. Who's gonna put it together? And whether Gunner even thinks it's a good idea. And as well, what we would trigger it on, for which project failed, and how we decided it didn't make it. Um, the Normans and the Strong's are not keen on that idea. They just wanna move out of Dorchester and into Gunner. They see Gunner as the future, that they're, the bigger, the bigger town that they can do something with, and go forward with. What's driving Dorchester appears to be their concern about Kiln, that's coming into the northern town, and they're much, much more focused on that now than they are on, on anything else going on.
Mayor, if you could, I'll make a motion that we, that we let them into ETJ on CAD number thirteen oh nine one eight, uh, on, on Matthew Road. And the ID for that is, uh, two four six oh seven oh six hundred five oh one, at two hundred and twenty-nine point one one nine acres.
Hold on a second, Doc. All right.
As you want to motion here, so we just consider the rest of this, and then to BNSF, and we will have, maybe I need that.
Thank you.
So, everybody, as mayor, we let you move that ad, um, seven oh two, uh, Ms. Kleigman was removed from conference, so we will not have to do a real call now.
Uh, point, what, what was that vote?
It was unanimous for, um, Ms. Linda Walker to come in, and the rest of them will wait.
But was it four zero?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I mentioned item number four, just to consider a positive action upon the wishes of the city. Um, request for qualifications for legal services, and, um, and it all now, um, Mesrport is, um, has designed, their last day is the end, building Friday, so we are putting out, um, the request for qualifications for... You will first. Do you guys have any questions?
I, I have a question there. It, it says, um, legal services, the comments said R and Q, the primary used to say R and Q. I didn't get in my packet, any content or...
It's on, it's on the, it was on your, I know all our seats.
Looks like this one.
Yeah.
So, is this the thing that came at like one o'clock, and I can print it off?
I'll print it for you.
Yeah, I bet that's it.
It's pretty standard, um, just kinda asking you basic things.
Um, thank you.
Yes, uh, attorneys, uh, you have this scope of work, um, explains on how many needs we have, what types of needs that we would need, ordinances, where, it's, it's pretty standard, thanks for that.
Mayor, if you're about to add, uh, these, uh, this firm, whoever it is, it's gotta be, I would say, it could be a municipal law firm.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and not just a law firm that does one or two cities. I mean, it, it needs to be like, Mesrport is comprehensive, so there's someone that does land acquisition, someone with age, or someone that...
I agree with that.
All of the other things. Um, I, I think it needs to be one law firm that, um, can support all of the needs.
It's gotta be one, one-stop shop.
Where secretly, where do we post this? Like, how do we distribute this?
Agent, how have we done it in the past, did you, um?
I do T M L, website. It can be put in the paper.
Yeah, there's another one, it calls S G R.
S G R. Oh, yeah, we did that one too.
You put on S G R, T M L, that has a pretty broad range of coverage, and I can give you other recommendations, if you want to send it directly to other firms, and you can just send it to them and see if they'll...
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
And who's running point? Are you running point in this search process?
So, both of us, and then of course, we'll bring that together.
Uh, do we have a date coming up? You know, what's it gonna be, thirty-day look, or, uh, can we, can we, can we put a earmark on that?
Just generally a thirty-day advertisement. For the, for the information in your qualifications, and the scope, and all that, nothing that is to be, to, to, to choose. Um, still, we would start with a thirty days, till we, we get as far as, and off.
Yeah. Just want to put a thirty-day quote, and maybe on it, and bring it back to council.
Absolutely.
I mean, so, I, I don't know if this is on, or is that on?
Yeah, great.
Three days.
So, the first part of it, not, not that applicable. That, last, last two pages definitely are. So, you should get, I think, first qualified applicants, based upon what you have on the last two pages, and, um, I think that will...
So, do we not need the first two pages? Is that what you're saying?
It's just, there's things on there that are not applicable.
What?
Collusion. That doesn't have any, really have anything to do with cities, necessarily. Um, but other things do, right? So, um, if I saw this, I know what the intent is, and I know you're seeking a municipal firm that has broad services, and so, I, I understand what, what the intent is, and could, um, form a response, an application that could be that.
So, is there anything that you suggested we add? I mean, I don't...
The only thing, the only thing I see, is a basic problem what y'all said today, is to make sure that the firm has multiple, um, disciplines that can fully respond to multiple needs. needs, I'd say, something like that.
Should that be spelled out? What we want, what we're looking for in.
It's in the scope of work.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, you have annexations, zoning, real estate, property, personnel, it's, that's sufficient, those are the major topics that, that we provide in litigation, so I think that would, the firms that would respond to this, that have those types of capabilities, would be a full service mission. And, and you can, and you can ferret out the ones that don't think they, it's pretty apparent when you look at them and if you interview them, what kind of capabilities they have.
Could we use your firm to give us an answer, what's the good firm?
Okay, so I have a motion.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we move forward with issuing this RFQ for legal services.
I'll say it. Have to say it, I'll leave her.
I got a question though, can we put a timeline on that, a thirty days?
We're gonna do it every day, we're gonna start there, yes. Okay, so, all right, so we have everybody on there, and then, um, the motion carries, and then we'll move to the item number five. Okay, so this is how to get an, uh, canvas the election and the duty to terminate the position of city manager, independent actions, is to ask you, we're not taking out the issue itself again, or are we voting on the issue again, we're simply affirming previous actions so that there are no questions of law moving forward, but a little vote on what we did previously, um, so we're just ratifying what was done prior.
I'll make a motion that we, that we, uh, abandoned the city manager form.
To the firm.
And ratify the vote.
Ratify the vote. Also, a little caveat, can you explain to us what went wrong the last time? Because I don't understand yourself. Can you give us a little?
Sure, there, there were some procedural, um, things that needed to take place that didn't take place, and they weren't corrected, and so now it's, it's fine to go on.
Okay.
I, I just want people who's have said that it was boycotted by the council, that is not true, I can only speak for myself, I did not get a phone call for the first, um, ratification or canvassing of an election, I, I did not know, I didn't get a phone call the second time, um, I, I did have an email when I was at my daughter's wedding, I didn't check, the email, Deetra did call me at like one thirty that day, and I was mowing my yard, and I said, you can't find anybody else, I'll come, I'm gonna be dirty because I mow my yard, I will, I will come, and Patsy was kind enough to come, so I, there was no intent to not ratify the election, I can't speak for everybody, I, I don't want to put words in anybody else's mouth, but there was no intent to do that, nobody questioned the vote, if, if there was, I did not get notification, um, I'm certainly not, um, trying to say that people didn't vote the way they did, so I just want that to be.
Just to explain my situation, I got notified on a Sunday afternoon, and I had plans that this was Monday morning, I had plans that I was supposed to be in, in southern, not being in eastern Oklahoma, and so that's what I had, I couldn't make, but sorry about that, but, you know, that's the way it goes, so.
And, and I would like to add that, too, I, we had medical appointments that day, and Deetra called us late, not before, and said, or before five, I guess, and said, can you come, I said, well, I really can't, but, uh, it was on a void. I would like to make a suggestion for the future, though, when something is scheduled and we need council participation, could we please, um, alert the council in a more timely fashion, because, you know, guys, everybody has lives, and has, has things that they're all looking to do, and so I would like to suggest that in the future, if we're needed, please make us aware of that, um, I think that it was assumed it would be okay, and it wasn't, so we hate to put the city in that, in that situation, so I'm just suggesting.
I'd like to say one more thing, on my part, there was nothing meaningful there at all, I just had plans made that I couldn't, I couldn't refuse, and so I was gonna be out of state, uh, so I couldn't make it on the, uh, from Sunday to Monday, whatever, I couldn't do it, so, anyway, that's the way it goes, because it takes more planning than that, you know?
Okay, so there you made the motion.
Yes.
Uh, to ratify, and it's two seconds, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries, we're on to agenda item number six, I have some questions, um, in light of what we have in executives, so I want to bring this back after executive session. So, item number six, I'm moving back to executive session, um, or after, after executive session. Item number seven. This is discussing the multi-action on the ordinance, I'm ending, um, the chapter of the city manager in our ordinance, again, this is a housekeeping, we no longer operate on the house manager form of government, and just need to clean up the ordinances that no longer apply, um, there will be more reasons, um, probably to come as we don't cross them, um, I, um, so this is just to abandon, really, this particular ordinance on the city manager.
So this does to the ordinance that repeals the prior ordinance that established that position and assigned duties to that position, so it really is a housekeeping matter to, you know, undo what you have on the books, by ordinance.
So is it possible to make a motion that you get rid of the city manager position and replace it with the city administrative position?
That's a different agenda item.
I think that would be a different agenda item. That could be at the end of the agenda, though, would you have requested an agenda item?
So you have a motion to, um, repeal this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to do repeal the ordinance and, and delete it.
Okay, second, second, Patsy, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion, and we're going to agenda item number eight, um, discussing also the action of the standard, you may hire a development director and a finance director, so I have just directed Deetra to advertise for the finance director, um, did we already do that yet? Okay, so we have updated job descriptions recently, we have kind of been working on that, so we need to, to do that, um, on another note, NOAA had requested to continue working for Gunner, so we would like to try to work that out, um, he's briefing all the current projects, we had a couple of development and pre-development meetings that were really, really good, um, I was actually impressed with NOAA during those meetings, and, um, I would like to be able to have a kind of stay, this is obviously up to you guys, because you have a resignation, so, is he standard consulting? He's, he wants to do it from, um.
Because he said he cannot withdraw, he just.
Yeah, but I don't know, his intentions were ever to drive two and a half hours, every three, three, they wanted to set the ranch, and they just couldn't do it, so the drive is really, really taxing, um, but he said if you can do, pay him remote, and then we can maybe pay his expenses like the Lord, when he could come into town to do certain things, if that's necessary, um, and then we could keep him on as a, kind of as needed.
Because we paid for Lori to come, two and three days at a time, every month.
Yes.
So is the intent or the wish to just leverage him as a consultant, or that in conjunction with finding a permanent replacement?
His thought was to be, to consult with us, to kind of keep everything going, because we had a lot in the pipeline, and then he said that he would also be willing, that once we go and we posted, that he wanted to train that person and help down, strengthen everything.
The transitional type.
He is, he's kind of a lack of, um, but I think it would be transitional.
I've got an idea that, that, I think we ought to make an appointment of three members, say the mayor and the mayor pro town, and one other member that wants to, to be, to interview the people who are going, or applying for that position, and then, you know, and have your man, that guy, to be in the interim, to help facilitate that.
And he said he would.
Okay.
So we need to go ahead and advertise everything, so we got to advertise one of those positions.
Exactly, yeah.
With the updated job descriptions, um, to the thirty days, like we're doing with the attorney as well.
And it's all in the same spaces, right, to T M L, is that what's?
Uh, if you want to clarify, then Noah will continue as the development director on a consulting basis.
Yes, yes.
Um, is he the development director as a consultant, or do we just consult with him?
He's a, the development director, he's our consultant, like Lori was our finance director.
He'll still be on board until we're licensed.
He will have benefits.
Full time?
And Lori did not have benefits either.
It'll be as needed.
Will it be full time?
As needed.
As needed.
As needed.
Just what Lori was, just on a full time.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I, I know, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure I've made a good study, and, um, it'll be seamless as we try to, we have a motion, honestly, I.
I think you need a motion.
I do need a motion.
I have a question.
Okay, Ashley, hold on.
Hi, Ashley, this is Hawkins, fifteen, fifteen McCollum Road, so, um, my main question is, before this is, um, obviously voted on, will this potentially save money salary-wise and cost-wise to the city by not having him currently, while still looking, um, for an E D C member, or a director, I guess I could say, by having him consult, would that save the city money doing that?
Actually, no, it's just, um, we're not having to.
We'll be consulting with E D C. We'll, we'll not be consulting with E D C, he's just coming up with.
All right, the development director, so, um, but there won't be insurance, it's all benefits, stuff that go with it as well, so, yeah, it'll save us money.
And then, I guess, I also have another question, so who would, I guess, take on that role of like, um, E D C, like, going in and giving them updates, and, you know, because I've attended a P O, and who, who would, I guess, or does that position even need it, or have we just been using our hands the whole time?
That's actually some of the, the E D C probably needs to, um, they're completely separate operations, it's, um, they're gonna have to decide.
Okay.
If I'm missing you on a agenda item, just let me know, because I have so many of these as far as several people sign up for cycles, so just raise your hand, you want to come to the bottom and talk about it, agenda item, I'm gonna need to show my words. How much of Noah's salary is paid by the E D C? Is it the staff?
No, what was our?
So I'll say E D C.
Mark Merrill, seventy-one Mall Court, um, I guess my question is, is it really in the best interest of the city to long-term have a consultant that's two and a half to three hours away and doesn't have any vested interest in the growth of the city?
No, no, it won't, it won't be long.
So this, this is a short-term, interim, consultant-only, non-employee role?
That is what they advertised about.
Okay. Just picture.
Okay, so, we need.
Does our motion need to include Noah as well?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we move forward with, uh, posting.
Can we add to that, can we add to this motion, um, see, a motion? About reenactment.
No, because it's not posted, that was.
It would be, yes.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we do move forward with posting interviewing and hiring, uh, development director and finance director, uh, while in the meantime, continuing to leverage Noah in a consultant basis on an as-needed basis.
Okay, so I think Patty, and Patty, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's Anna, that motion carries, and we're going to number nine, um, discussing scope of communication of the city manager with the many council members, um, and that's our ordinance, one point zero two point zero six one, um. So I have a ordinance that's on, um. So basically, our ordinance states that, um, so there's two ways to.
Um, rules of procedure for revisiting the E D C around the attorneys, and obviously there's a lot of reasons we want to control this, citizens call, we have to return, it would be keeping on the edge of the bill, um, we have a budget that we have to stay within, so currently, and we visited this back in September, but our rules of procedure is two ways, one is significant projects that will be on a level of nature, it will be time-consuming, such as a lawsuit, that has to be requested here, and then the council has to approve it, the monologue, that's not actually ever happened, B, the only other option is that the day-to-day questions, routine administrative issues, um, you know, agenda questions, human resources questions, staff questions, they can be requested by the city secretary, there were no other options, correct? When we brought this up in September, I did mention that significant, that word needs to be defined, you know, what is significant, it would not prove that, we need to know is it ten hours, is it fifteen hours, is it, is it an amount of money on a particular project, we need to have those, those answers, because it matters about our budget, our budget right now, we're going through it, we're spending a quarter of our budget, the reason why, that's why this is important, so a while back, I issued a directive that nobody speaks to legal by ordinance except for Deetra, and at the time, Jeff and Lori was designated because we wrote that into the ordinance, um, that was the only thing that was changed back in September, so I had to reissue that, again, after three months spending a quarter of our budget on legal, because there's just so much that we're, it's violating our ordinance, so I'm trying to enforce it, that's created a problem, because enforcing an ordinance does not allow an alderman to arm that legal, so we have to address this, so that's what we're discussing now, um, this is item number nine, so I do have to be people who have signed up, mark this line.
Sure, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that aldermen have power only as a body in this room, or in an open meeting, is that correct? Mr. Messer?
That's correct.
They have duties outside of this room, the city's only bound by their, when they're a body politic voting.
Be specific, please explain one of these duties, pick any one of them.
What they, what they can do and not do, for example?
When they have the role of an alderman, how can they exercise that role if it's not in an open meeting?
Well, because, so, city council members, aldermen, in other words, have two hats, that they were two types of, um, acts that they perform, they perform acts in their official capacity, on the one hand, on the other hand, they perform, uh, perform acts in their personal capacity, when they're elected or appointed as, um, a city council member, they act in their official capacity, that official capacity, for sure, is in a body politic collectively to legislate and to vote, but they also can act officially outside of that, outside of that body, state. State legislators perform many acts, and there's no difference between a local legislator, state legislator, federal legislator, that performs acts outside of, when they're at a body politic. There, there's a lot of acts that they do or can do, so, um, I don't know.
But, but they can't legislate outside of this room?
They can't legislate as a body, they can perform acts outside of the body in their official capacity.
Okay, so we have an ordinance that says, the only people that could talk to the city attorney is the mayor, or the city secretary, or they're designated. My understanding is that on a repeated basis, multiple council members have violated this, contacting the, the city attorney directly, and I understand from listening to what you just said, that you, correct me if I'm wrong, feel that you represent the body?
I don't feel that way, that's my ethical duty under the state.
To represent the city.
Be specific, I just want to make that distinction, to represent the city, not the body.
It's both.
Well.
It's both, I represent the city, and I represent the officials as constituents, as the officials of the city, so I represent, but I don't represent one particular member.
Again, so this is part of my point that I'm trying to make, you've repeatedly been contacted by individual city council members knowingly in violation of an ordinance of the city. You've spent time, billable hours, communicating with them, either talking them down from a ledge, encouraging them, I have no idea, but I know they've contacted you on multiple occasions, because I've seen some of the emails, so, uh, what I would tell you is, is that you knowingly have violated the ordinance, and therefore have not represented in good faith what's going on in the city. It, it's my opinion that you should have immediately contacted the mayor and the city secretary and said, these individuals are contacting me, I need you to handle this in some form or fashion. I don't know if that's happened, can you explain to me if that actually did happen, or if you just went ahead and represented to each of them individually whatever's going on?
To answer the multiple questions that you just posed, some of which are meeting, I don't agree with you on the factual basis. So the answer is no, I didn't knowingly violate that, and I wouldn't say that other council members knowingly violated that.
They know the ordinance, they passed it.
Let me, let me finish. Um, the, the issue is, under your ordinance, it puts your city attorney in an ethical dilemma, and I have spoken to that with some of the council members. So my dilemma is, I have an ethical duty to every council member, and to be able to communicate with them on a reasonable basis, so that they are reasonably informed on what's happening in the city, and they can make informed decisions on what they need to do in their, in their elected or appointed position. Your ordinance constricts that. It doesn't actually prohibit it, carte blanche, but it does restrict that, and that is the tension between your local law and my, and your other, and your other city's attorney's ethical dilemma. So, but, so that gives you the broad-brush picture of the, the issue between your local rule and my ethical duties.
I understand. Um, when the ordinance was passed, were you present at that meeting?
No.
Okay.
Two.
Oh, so one of your partners?
I, I don't know, I wasn't.
Okay, so it's been, so this, this ordinance has been in effect for, you said 2013?
Yes.
Okay, so almost 11 years. I think it was actually put in right when I was finishing up mine, and, and I think it was put in because, again, we had council members repeatedly contacting the city attorney's office, and.
I reviewed all the emails, and that's exactly why it was put in place, because the use of.
So, so it's been in place for 10 years, you're the city attorney, lead city attorney for the city, and you're telling me you did not know that this ordinance existed, that, that, hold on, hold on, the council knows it existed, they've discussed it multiple times, Larry Peters was on the council when it was passed, but still finds it necessary to go out and contact in violation of the ordinance that you passed her repeatedly to go around the mayor, to go around the two people that you've authorized to contact them, when in fact, you should be going, hey mayor, I need this answer about this issue. And I'm wondering why you're bypassing the two people that you've authorized to contact them?
Hey Mark, can you come to your point?
My point is, why are you going around the ordinance to contact the city attorney and not running it through the mayor or the city secretary as the ordinance says?
Yeah, I haven't done that, but who has?
Uh, actually, I believe you have.
No, I have not, I haven't talked to any city, uh, no.
You have never sent an email to the city attorney requesting any information?
Oh, yeah, I have.
That's contacted the city attorney!
So here's, here's the, this is, this is how it shouldn't happen, and we're going to pass it almost 11 years ago, that, I mean, I didn't do this, but chapter 22.042, the powers of the duties of the mayor, given to me by the state of Texas, it says, the mayor shall all conduct to the insurance of the laws and orders of the municipal or property carried out. I have done that, period. Now, I understand Andy has a code of ethics, he has to, to function as well. What should have happened is when I issued a directive, and this is, you know, the, the note we did on Andy, because we've all had to work with this many times, and we have good working relationships, it's not a problem here, but what I, my position was that his term should have honor for the mayor directive, uh, he all went on and said, it's your ordinance, go fix it. That's what should have happened, and I begged him to address the significant, the worst significant, and add to it, literally, I think, even in that meeting, he said, I'll, I'll do it. You guys could have any time during that discussion said, I want to change this, this, and this, because we only get to do it. The council that Mark Merrill had at the time said, you know what, this is getting crazy, there's too much, we're avoiding our budget, let's, let's, you know, reel that in. We're now receiving it, come back out, i- if you need to talk to legal, when you have the legislative authority to do that, change the ordinance, because it does put Andy in that position, and I'm not going to refuse what the state is telling to us to address the ordinance, it's a problem here, we have to fix this, but we can't just violate it. You have to follow it, if you don't like the law, you change it, and they have the ability to change it.
But wasn't this item on the agenda?
In September.
In September?
In September.
And what, and what action did this council take in September?
Well, that's my question, I mean, if, if this, this has been in place for many, many years, I went back several years, several voices, this was not an issue, the aldermen weren't talking to legal, Mark Miller was, Deeter was, but now, within the last two months, it's a problem. So guys, if you want to talk to legal.
Is it, is it just two months, man?
We can change this ordinance, but understand, you have to also adjust the budget, we cannot keep doing this, $22,000 a month, we can't do it, because we can't get along, we do have to ask them about thoroughfares, are they in there, they have to ask them about thoroughfares, landeers, uh, dump hogs, um, easements, any of that, no, no, it's this big ring, that's what we're asking about. We're challenging each other, going in and getting him on opposite.
When, when you say the bickering, are you talking about personnel and positional issues? Or are you talking about city issues?
I'm saying that when the, aldermen are talking to Andy is because they feel like they've done something wrong.
Right, or he's done something wrong, or they don't agree with an action that's been taken.
Not taking that, that's not true.
It's not necessarily the people's business, is all I'm saying, it's fully in the list as you can see it.
Is it, is it the business of the city, or is it something else, is my question?
Can I ask a question of Andy's? Um, have we billed VNSF for the $40,000, $50,000, what are the fees that I was told they still owe?
Oh, you're looking at me, I'm sorry. I thought you was talking to him.
Anybody, yeah, very aware. What I'm talking about is city matters. Everything else aside, this is just city matters, our stuff, just ours.
Okay, all the complete of these are jumbled together, we've got $40,000, $50,000 coming back from VNSF.
No, that's not true, that's not true, Andy, they're separated, they're detailed and separated by Deetra. What's left over is far more than $22,000. What's left over, that is the city matters, it's the last four months.
So, how much, or what percentage would you estimate of the legal fees have been incurred by a city council member? I have had one conversation here, and that is, to my knowledge, the only one that has, I have caused a bill of four, um, and, what, 30 minutes?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the gist of it, and I don't know that anybody else has reviewed this at all, so I would say that the percentage is, when this people, when this kind of the county council members, we agree with that. So what do you attribute the increase in cost for the city, a billing that are city matters, is it development, is it what?
So, we're a little bit off topic, I mean, we're going into depth on this, we need to go, come back to whether or not you guys want to change your ordinance at the end of the day. Let me know that, and we'll, we'll, we'll.
I'm gonna, we make a note of that, and then Deeter will bring it up, and then we'll change that, okay, just to satisfy the thing.
I mean, anybody can look at.
What?
The ordinance, the city matters, you look at the ordinance, the city, pretty clear.
I've already pulled it, and I'll post them when I get them.
Could I make, could I make a comment about this, about this ordinance, because I, I think it's been a point of confusion for a long time, and I've, I've read it.
Yeah, we should, we could put it on number 7.
I mean, we can discuss it right now.
It's not an actual.
Yeah, it's not an actual, it says to discuss.
What do you want to change?
You can't, you can't vote on it, because if you vote on it, it's only a discussion.
Yeah, it just says to discuss, but, uh, I, I, I agree it needs to be clarified. I mean, talking to, 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 to William, I mean, I, I, we're, we're both looking at this, I mean, the, the mayor isn't actually mentioned anywhere in here that I see, and that's not against you, mayor, I'm just, I'm just saying it's not clear.
So, it works to.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that you shouldn't have access to council, I'm saying that, that this, this ordinance, it, it doesn't make any sense, it really ought to be written to clearly define who can contact, uh, who can contact legal. Parts of it are clear, but it's, the whole thing just needs to be rewritten, I, I, I completely agree.
I agree.
I agree.
So, I have a question, you had Andy for two minutes. So if our motion is ready, and to add this came, proactively write that, and have it be presented here for the next.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure everybody's sort of, you understand that my ethical responsibility is to have attention to your, your law. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I understand, but I'm going to enforce the ordinance. So, you and I said the request.
I can't read the, I can't enforce it. Was there, why didn't you recommend that we changed this?
He did.
Oh.
Well, in September, he did.
Did you recommend?
I have, I have made, so, I've had conversations about that with your, um, interim city manager. I mean, thought that that would be just among, a non-form of the council members.
He wasn't allowed to.
Bob wasn't allowed to. He was allowed to have conversations with us.
True.
So you guys want to, say for the, okay, so, so we're going to get item number 10, um, we're going to discuss the legal procedures and consequences for the mayor to be able to carry out city ordinance, so, hi. Okay, guys, so Cheryl is not here, this is on her request, but, um, to the only agenda, but also Kathy and, I mean, Kathy's attorney, Andy, they're also requesting this item on the, Cheryl, a little more specific, in saying that, um, I made a comment in October, I had the last meeting, that I wouldn't enforce it, the decorum ordinance, so is this what this is about? Okay, so I'll have to talk about that real quick. If you go back and then look at that meeting, when we handed this item, um, and all my friends and I have the exact, I can give you the, the summary of that, the exact maneuver, but what I said, there were three provisions that are being changed in the ordinance. Number two, Rudy, I said I will absolutely enforce that. Number one, was a violation of the constitution, your personal right to speech, and I said, I will not enforce anything that over, that is to cheat our constitution, I'm not going to violate the constitution, because somebody doesn't want to hear that someone else is upset within their capacity of their office. So, but again, that's what this is about, number one, the ordinance doesn't even exist yet, but I haven't violated it yet, so you kind of have to wait until I do that, to, 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 for me for it. Um, you have a right to speak, if you want to say it, mayor, uh, you, you campaign on transparency, and I will defend it for me. We talk about that, you have every right to, to calm down on that. Um, you can't come in and blast me because, you know, my yard looks like crap, okay? But you can't do that. So, I stand behind that, the comments I made, I absolutely stand behind them. I, I'm not going to violate constitution for the law, so.
So, I hope that everybody else has tried, you had a comment, person, and David, and, um.
Yes, John Todd, 2004, Fox Den Trace. I wanted to talk about number 10, and it's really more of a point of order, but I think you're getting to that with your discussion. Uh, for all of those in this meeting, this body and all the members of councils and groups went outside in August for an entire day, and half of the day, and Andy was there, half of the day, we spent talking about the Open Meetings Act, and the risks of it being violated because if convicted, it's a felony conviction, and you can go to jail. So, we're taking our time here to talk about legal procedures against the mayor for violating an ordinance, yet after that entire day session, in a following meeting, we had two city council members openly, openly admit on the record that they violated the Open Meetings Act by talking about agenda items in advance to get him on the meeting, and the mayor said, I rejected them because you violated the open act. Andy, you were in this meeting, and my question to the, to you, Andy, was, we're sitting here trying to hold the mayor accountable for violating an ordinance, yet we had members of this council openly admit to violating the Open Meetings Act, and we did nothing. They weren't, they weren't, uh, yeah, they weren't reprimanded, they weren't, uh, called out, so it's really a point of order that we're wasting the city's time talking about the mayor violating an ordinance, it has really no merit, no bearing on what we're doing as a city, yet we allow our city council members to openly violate a federal issue, and we take no action. So it's my question, really, to all of you, that we need some, we need some accountability here. If we're going to play by the rules, and I think Andy just mentioned it in number nine, that, hey, if you guys want to get together and talk, you know, off the record, in a non, non-form environment, that leads to really risky, risky kind of situation. So my question is, my, not my question, my point is, can we get our act together, and let's focus on the things that are important to the city, and our growth and our future, not petty little things about the mayor violating the First Amendment Act, so, thank you.
I, I'm sorry, I, I'm not questioning what he's talking about, about.
I don't know what he's talking about either, um, how is the state law, um, and it's not federal law, a non-form of the council can get together and talk about city business all day long, and it's perfectly legal. Three council members can get, can get together and ask for a special meeting, um, and ask that to the mayor, so a special meeting can be called by statute, and that's not a total violation, so, just for clarity purposes.
Well, for clarity purposes, I think it was in the August or Sep, it was in the It was in the September meeting, Connie and you were the ones. That the topic of the discussion was getting agenda items on the thing, or getting items on the agenda. And the mayor was trying to say, look, I listen, all you guys got to do is call and talk to me. Tell me what you want. And I think you made the comment, well, X, Y, and Z and I, we talked about this and we wanted this on agenda. And the mayor said, no, I told you no because you guys did it in a quorum effectively. And Andy was here and she said, no. That's why I put it, I said, no. And so my question is, if you guys are routinely talking in multiples, more than two, about agenda items and not being held accountable, shame on you. That's what the rules are for.
I spoke with you now and unless we discuss and deliberate and voted on the item, I didn't ask, you know, would you like to add catching a little too much street side part to the agenda? It is not a violation unless we're discussing...
I would disagree that if three of you were talking about an agenda item off the record...
It's musically attorney.
Pardon me?
It's not a violation.
So three of you talk about business here, it's not a violation?
We can have this discussion.
I think this is the one. We're going off topic.
We're going off topic, but my message is, please, let's get back to business. We've got a lot of things ahead of us and this petty stuff is just dragging us down and creating animosity. We need a future, we need an economic development plan. Thank you.
So the video that I mentioned is from October. It's the second video that was published by Ashley. We come back from executive session, that's when we have this. It's been in an hour and one point, it's an hour and thirty-nine. And it was one forty-four. And I already told you what I said. So here's my question. They... We were supposed to discuss the legal procedures and consequences for the mayor's refusal to carry out the city ordinance. That's what was asked to discuss. And I would say that it was already asked and answered with that timeframe that I just gave you.
I have a question. Okay. So along with carrying out city ordinances, according to chapter fifty-two, the mayor can return an ordinance or a resolution to government body with a statement of objection.
It's a different agenda.
But wait. So you have two items that are sitting. One is agenda, one is...
We were talking about when we said agenda items, is it actually an agenda item?
This is... That is a violation of the city ordinance because you didn't sign it. You wanted to...
It's not. It's not an active ordinance.
You didn't add it back. You know, there's been two agendas that you left off of.
Okay, and we'll talk about that when we get to the agenda item. Right now, we're talking about what happens if the mayor refuses to enforce an ordinance. Have I refused one yet? Aside from that conversation, have I refused one?
Well, we have an equal to get anything passed because he refused it.
So you haven't refused.
I'm just shy on that you refuse to send it back to a law.
That's not true. You've passed everything except for two that are waiting for you in December. And we'll talk about that when we get to that item. So this is what's happened to the mayor, I don't enforce a city ordinance. First of all, I have, we just talked about the agenda one, I do enforce ordinance. Does that create a problem? So Andy was asked and he answered in October. And he said that you could motion to override. And I said I still would not enforce shutting someone down who chooses not to address the government body as a whole, but wants to actually talk to one of the members. That is your constitutional right to proceed. I'm not going to shut it down. Your ordinance cannot supersede the Constitution. So here... Here's what can happen. If I do truly fail to enforce the city ordinance, you can sue me for it. Take people for judgments. Otherwise, in this city, I'm going to enforce ordinance.
Is having a section of the rules that we're talking about, if you can't individually say it was somewhere young in a district or municipal manner, is that a violation of someone's first obligation?
It is. I'm not going to give an illegal opinion on that because it's a very complex body of law. All I will say, and I recognize it at the time, that is a tension between the First Amendment and your local ordinance. I don't know which one could dominate.
Well, you're a lawyer. No, he's right. Because the judge would decide. He's saying that it's a conflict.
People that don't deal with a complex, in-depth constitutional practice may not understand that. I fully understand that. The First Amendment is a very complex, in-depth, complicated body of law. And even federal judges in courts of deals and Supreme Court have difficult times to press on with the concept. And so I'm not going to give a firm opinion on that until I have to run a demo on that. In fact, I don't know which would predominate. The local ordinance may very well predominate. The First Amendment may very well predominate. And I'm not giving a hard opinion because I haven't studied that.
We live in a...
I'm not interested in that. But let me go beyond that. So the mayor spoke, you know, what would happen if she violated it. Let me give you a few more procedural principles. I'm not talking about it specifically. So one, as she talked about, you can make a motion to overrule her. And then it's up to the mayor to abide by that. If for whatever reason you think that she's acting illegally, the council could vote to censure her. Basically a slap in the hand. That is a procedure that city councils do from time to time and it's not applicable to hers. It's anybody that's on the body. The third thing, what the mayor briefly discussed is if you, any of the council members feel like the mayor is acting illegally, not obeying local law. For example, if you call a special meeting and it's not called, she has a ministerial duty to do that. The remedy would be for a council member or multiple council members in their official capacity to file a lawsuit in district court to compel her by man damage injunction to follow the law and act on her ministerial duty. So those are various procedures I've seen. Hopefully you understand.
Mr. Self, you had it.
Yes. Dave Self, one sixteen, Broken Mo Gunner. This is just funny to me. The item prior, she's trying to enforce ordinance that you guys have all been breaking. You're shaking your head. If you emailed...
No, 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 no.
Okay.
You got your opinion, I got mine.
I have the facts. It's not an opinion, it's a truth.
I don't break the law.
I guess we can show that.
Well, I didn't see the sign, I'm sorry about that. You know, we love making mistakes. So, but anyway, I'm sorry that I don't intend to break the law.
Intent doesn't matter. You're in law enforcement, you should know that.
Ninety-nine percent, you know.
Yeah, you should know that. Anyway, she's trying to enforce that, you guys are blocking it.
No, we're not. I don't want to get in an argument with you.
Then why are you interrupting me?
I'm sorry, but you know, what you're saying is not what, you know, it's not true.
It is absolutely true that you have emailed the city attorney, correct?
The city attorney, I have to, yeah.
Okay, so that was in violation of an ordinance, correct?
I can talk to anybody I want to.
Larry, what he's saying is that we have the ordinance, right?
Yeah.
And we talked about it in the top spot, I have to enforce the ordinance. And Andy has an ethical duty on his end and there was time left. So everybody, I think everybody here has spoken to me with a symbol or email or whatever. Maybe it's that capacity. But we just, for the point of it, we don't have to fix the ordinance. So I'm trying to enforce that one and I'm, you know, we're struggling, but now we're on this topic and I'm getting hammered. Because I'm being accused of not enforcing that ordinance, it doesn't quite exist yet. And I believe is in violation of our constitutional rights. So that's kind of what he's saying is it's a little bit of a...
We have no understanding toward her whatsoever, okay? It's all because the general population think we don't, you know, there's no problem there.
Yeah, I just look at actions, Larry.
Well, I don't have any actions.
So...
That's all I have.
Casey, number one thirty-nine, was before and so I was, Larry, did you just say you don't break the law?
No, I... Yes, I just said that, but I tried, you know, so I parked in front of the sign.
Exactly. The car didn't come get you because you parked in the far lane.
I didn't see the sign.
I respect it.
Watching my attention and I'm very sorry.
Definitely all times. So we're back to item number ten.
Item number ten.
There's no action, so we'll finish with you, Angie, unless you guys have more questions.
Angie, we're at thirteen hundred and four, Pike Road. And I want to... Kathy, you are in the safe zone right now. But the others of you aren't, what I'm about to say. Connie, I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. When y'all were talking about... Speak louder. I don't think...
Yes.
Is it on?
Yeah.
When you said, we know how about the violations, what, did I hear you correctly when you said we never get to talk to the city manager?
I said the city manager had been told that he comes to the best during county meetings.
Oh.
By who?
Okay, well, I have information to the contrary because I asked for a record request from Mr. Gibson's cell phone.
Oh, he is doing this. This is that we come up somewhere else, so the mayor's refusal to carry out any...
Well, I don't want to give her an option to defend herself now when I'm wanting to speak with what I'm trying to ask her. So can I consider it?
Yes, it's a violation.
It's a violation, yes.
That I'm watching.
Yes.
It's a violation.
That should be taken.
And a statute of ordinance. I'm just clarifying what she told me, just what I thought I heard, that she said we never get to talk to the city manager. That's what I'm trying to clarify.
She is... I did tell Jeff, I explained to him and I told him that you're not supposed to be briefing two-on-two or one-on-one at the end of the day and one of the three people that have never mentioned that is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. I did tell him that. I did not tell him he can't speak. And so... That's not necessarily me enforcing ordinance today.
So where do you suggest I speak about this? Which number?
We threw that back under, I think it's fourteen, I guess. It relates more to him.
Thank you.
This is the special, the mayor's refusal to carry out city ordinance. We have three ways. This is the second time Andy's asked and answered. On the other three, can we move on to discussion that you guys have more questions?
I'm afraid to.
No, 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 we'll just hear it later. We're all very passionate about these issues. We're wondering about time. It's okay, we just need to talk to each other. Do you have a question?
It's okay.
Okay, come on up. So we can be respectful and we'll do this.
I promise I'm very respectful. Okay, first of all, I have to tell you, thank you, first of all, for being our mayor, okay? I appreciate you. I see it's your foregone. I don't see anything in this silliness that we keep going over and over again. How can we help you stop these ones that are not for you, that are truly against us and you? How do we get them off of your back? That's what I want to know. How do we get them off of your back? So you can move forward to do your job for us.
May.
No, no, I can't... May, to me, is like too long. But you do see what you're going to have till May? Do you see what you're up against? False documentation, false sayings, one lie after another lie after another lie. Now that's telling you, that's telling you. Do you really want to do this till May? You want to put us through this till May? Do you want to put yourself through this? What can we do to get them off your back? So we can move forward and trust somebody that is going to help us without closed doors, sign contracts with nobody knew about for two years? And then you come here and pick on her? The nerve. The nerve of any of you to go against her. When you knew about this railroad stuff and now you want this ordinance? You are insulting us.
We're all talking again.
We're... She isn't...
Can I ask you a question? This right here is what's going against her.
Well, this has to stop. This has to stop. They should be on your team and not fighting against you. This is nonsense. You're wasting our time, you're wasting his time, you're wasting our money. Tell us what we can do to help you put the end to this nonsense. That's what I want to know.
Thank you.
One point with what we're looking at on this one for ten. If I recall, my biggest issues was that the item one was that they would limit citizens' comments to one hour. You only had...
We never pass that. We just go to the end of it.
Well, I thought that was what that item was.
The issue was me saying I was not going to enforce that provision of the ordinance. There were three parts. And it was only the first part that you want us to write the entire government body. And so I would do it because it limits your person than right to speak.
And I agree. We should be able to address. For example, if we wanted to talk about trees, obviously that would be Connie, you, Ben. Yeah, not the whole council. I agree that all comments should be respectful. Yeah. So other than that, you shouldn't be afraid to have us talk to you one-on-one.
So we're going to move on to... Okay, so we're going to move on to item number eleven. This is a discussed local government code chapter twenty-two and fifty-two. So I'm going to let, I guess, whatever the comments Cheryl's not here. I think three of you asked for twenty-two and fifty-two. Let me just know what those are. Chapter fifty-two is general provisions applicable to general, type A general municipalities. And this goes over the general powers, but I believe that the question was section fifty-two point zero zero three, approval by the mayor and related conditions for ordinances to take effect. So I'll open it up, we're just kind of reading the section real quick. The four ordinance resolutions adopted by the government body of municipality. We're mentioning that ordinance resolutions are placed in offices of the secretaries. Usually what happens is we have a meeting on Thursday, the attorney's going to get the adjustments to the ordinance. They send them to DTRA and she calls and says, hey, I've got an emergency time. That's usually like Tuesday-ish. If... Sometimes it's longer. But once she has them, she noted by mistake. Then that brings in part number two. If I'm not okay with it and I'm not going to sign it, I can leave it to sit for ten days. If it becomes a dispute, I'll watch, just by my error, watch. But there is a provision that says if the mayor does not sign an ordinance resolution before the fourth day after the date of placement in the secretaries office and does not return it, does not return the ordinance resolution after section C, the ordinance or resolution takes effect. That's what I was talking about. So after four days, like it's been two, I think it's ten days actually. So, but if the mayor returns ordinance or resolution to the government body with a statement of objections before the fourth day and after the date of the ordinance resolution, the resolution places in secretary's office, then the government body shall on the return reconsider the vote by which the ordinance or resolutions is adopted. So I think here's our argument, if you can tell me if I'm wrong. We only meet once a month. And they cannot take action or vote when it's a city, you know, at the corner, right? That means by default, when... That means by default, when Dietrich meets the ordinance, I have four days to initial it and place a statement on it that I'm returning for reconsideration. And we discuss it when it comes back, since I need to do it. Nowhere in the statute does it say when. So, I thought I was being respectful and courteous, because you and Cheryl, the two ordinances that I'm sending back for reconsideration for October were yours, yours and Cheryl's. I knew you weren't gonna be here at the last meeting, I didn't put it on for them to decide when you authored the ordinance. So, that's why I had time for December. And I'll open that up to you. I was not here at the last meeting, but I did listen to the video, and I did give the request to them on this meeting, and it wasn't. This is not a regular meeting, this is a special meeting, it's supposed to actually be for just the highest tier. We're not supposed to have a full, six-hour meeting. But there are other things on there, other than just, so post-approach maybe is down here. And you're one of them, and all of these items are for you guys. So when I looked at it and saw six hours of the meeting, I said, no, these two are returned for reconsideration, they can wait because it's gonna add another hour to our meeting, easily. Question to Andy, and if I'm wrong, tell me, I mean, I, I want to know. So we picked that, this, I'm a part of a campaign against the city attorney, we picked that apart word by word. So it says, if a mayor returns an ordinance or resolution to the governing body with a statement of objection before the fourth day. I never got a statement of objection on any of them before the fourth day. I signed and wrote them in on the ordinances, if I send that to everybody with a statement of objections, you're deliberating in a quorum outside of an open meeting, and you can't take a vote anyway, it has to be discussed again. We're not deliberating, if you send us a statement of objection, that's not a deliberation. If I'm telling you wrong, I disagree, and you're thinking about it, each of you are deliberating. You're making decisions. Just because Spencer's thinking about it doesn't mean he's sharing with me what he's saying. If you go back and listen to the telling my training video that every single one of us have to do when we both end, it literally says, briefings, information coming to you, you don't even have to say a word if more than a quorum has received the information. Because you're deliberating, you're making decisions, all of you are making decisions based on what I just told you, I just briefed you. So, no, I'm not gonna do that, sorry. Andy, if I'm wrong, please tell me, and I'll accept that, can you just?
Yeah, well, let me just read the statute, and we'll talk about what the words of the statute says. What the general, what the mayor says is generally correct, so this is fifty-two oh oh three C. If the mayor returns an ordinance or resolution to the governing body with a statement of objections before the fourth day, after the date the ordinance or resolution is placed in the city secretary's office, the governing body shall, on return, reconsider the vote by which the ordinance or resolution was adopted. So, what I, what I have understood, when ordinances are checked into by the mayor, she lets Dietrich know, when we have our weekly meetings to talk about them, they both tell me there's been objections. And so I said, okay, that's gotta go back to the governing body, and that's pretty much where it ends, and then it's up to the mayor and Dietrich to put it back on the, the recourse that I would see for the council members to pass the ordinance originally. That would be the three of you get together and you have, ask the mayor, tell the mayor you want a special meeting to consider that, and you only have, you have seventy-two hours notice, so you can have a special meeting. Every three days, the three of you ask the mayor to do that. So that's, that's the recourse that I would see. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but that's, that's a statutory right that the council members possess.
The governing body shall, on return. Does that not mean?
Not to you.
I can only return it to you in an open meeting. No, no, the governing body shall, on return, reconsider, I'm talking about, return to the next meeting? Right, but I can't return it until we're at a meeting, but it doesn't say when.
I, yeah, I know, and you both have.
It doesn't say the next meeting, it doesn't say, you know, you only have ninety days, it doesn't say.
You both have, you both have valid points, this is, I would.
I honestly thought I was giving.
Think that this probably has never been ruled upon by any court or attorney in general. I, I could see both of you, both of your viewpoints being valid. But I'm giving you the recourse, if you don't know about it, if you don't get something on the ten day, your recourse is give it to the council members and call a special meeting so that you can get an honor of judgment.
So my question is, you know, what is these, that you work for? Um, what is normal protocol if it's setback for reconsideration, is it setback on the next year?
Yeah, we represent probably sixty cities around the Dallas Fort Worth area, this issue never comes up. But there are multiple issues that happen here that don't ever come up. Mayor's, mayor's rarely make that objections. But, but that's.
We're not the.
That's, that's more.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do what I have to, so. So, there's more to session, I want to have a fifty-two, you guys have any questions? We're gonna move to chapter twenty-two. We did fifty-two, this is twenty-two, um, this is for the local municipal officers, and I passed. Um, clarification on chapter twenty-two, I was given by Cheryl, uh, section twenty-two point zero seven seven, I don't know if it's the same for, for Connie and Larry. But this is the chapter on removal of municipal officers. Says the governing body of the municipality may remove municipal officer for incompetence, questions, non-adaptations in office after providing the officer with notice and opportunity to be heard. Um, if the governing body lacks confidence in a municipal officer appointed by the governing body, the governing body may remove the officer at any time. Their removal is effective only if two-thirds of the elected voter and mayor have a resolution declaring lack of confidence. So, let's be clear, we're not talking about the governing body municipal officers. This, right, you're wrong, Andy, this is about municipal officers such as the city secretary, the treasurer, marshal, uh, uh, you know, some of these things, have tasks to do, all the other, the attorney is.
Municipal judge. It's everybody, it's, it's, all municipal.
We're not appointed.
Yeah, well, you're, okay.
We're elected, we're not appointed, you can't remove me or them without going to court.
So, of course, I disagree, so.
One order, please.
If the governing body lacks confidence in a municipal officer appointed by the governing body?
Um, you're reading B, I'm focusing on B.
Okay.
I agree with you on B, because you are not appointed. And so the people that are appointed, myself, secretary, city marshal, treasurer, that, that for sure would apply. A lack of no confidence with two-thirds vote, but A is any municipal officer, not just one appointed. And so that would include elected officers, and all of you and us are municipal officers, so A would apply to every municipal officer.
I have a question, I have a question, mayor.
You actually, you do, um, Mark does have, I'm so sorry, you have to remind me, I have so many things up here.
I have, I have a question about, about what the, the city attorney just said. So, so what you're telling me is that a recall can be done by the council members of the mayor, but it can't be done by the citizens of a general type A municipality, correct?
Yeah, so recall.
Okay, okay, good, you answered my question, that's all I needed to hear, you said yes.
I'm not under cross-examination, I'm able to fully respond to your question if you'd allow.
Sure, okay, go ahead, a recall is?
So, a recall is a, is a part of a home municipality, it is in every home municipality's charter.
That's correct.
If you're a general law AC, so general law AC is governed by the general statutes, which includes, look, you're in a code twenty-two oh seven seven A.
Okay, so, in, um, in removal of a mayor of a general law type A municipality, what is required?
So I'll just read the statute to you, and then we can talk, pack it up and make up a discussion about it. The governing body of the municipality may remove a municipal officer, which is the mayor, council members, city secretary, city secretary, treasurer, marshal, for incompetence, corruption, misconduct, or malfeasance in office. So those are the bases, after providing the officer with due notice and an opportunity to be heard, which that triggers basically, um, due process.
Right.
Hold on one second, so you just heard that, and I'm gonna give you something to start with T and L.
Yep.
This is back in July when I asked this question, and our T and L attorneys, um, had said that our position is that chapter twenty-one applies to the council members of the mayor, chapter twenty-two applies to other municipal officers, i.e. appointed municipal employees like the city secretary, city attorney. In addition, they sent any of their legal Q and A that was, um, posted in June two thousand and seven. Or is the current chief of government of the member of the governing body of a general law city? It's all in twenty-one. None of that is in twenty-two, then it says on what grounds can a member of the governing body be removed? It points you to twenty-one, you have to go through a, through a judge. What, what I'm saying is, if the body can't vote, we out of office.
Okay, that was the point I was trying to get at, because chapter twenty-one actually spells out by statute the process to remove the mayor or any elected official. It isn't in twenty-two, twenty-two actually discusses the, uh, appointed people, people appointed by this body, okay? City secretary, uh, the city attorney, the city judge, anybody that's a municipal officer. Engineer, chief of police, those people can be removed. But twenty-one, chapter twenty-one is how you go about removing Connie for malfeasance, or Larry for this, or the mayor, if she's actually incompetent. But what I'm seeing is, y'all are trying to enforce rules on somebody that's doing their job, when in fact, as I pointed out earlier, the council acted in two-by-twos, in a walking quorum, for over two years to discuss and deliberate and, uh, negotiate a planning development agreement behind closed doors and pass it in one meeting. Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm on topic, I'm on topic, because my question is, how do we go about documenting those actions by this council to remove council members in a court of law, Mr. Messer?
You talked about chapter twenty-one, that's, that's the procedure, that's the procedure.
Okay, so in other words, the same, the same, the same types of things that the people who live in the city, live in the council, that have to be able to remove you Connie, or you Larry from the city council, are the same recourses you have Connie to remove the mayor? So, so, but, but why, but why are we talking about these types of things, then if y'all didn't request it? You put it on the agenda.
So let's hold on, Mark, let's have Larry and Connie an opportunity to explain why they wanted to talk about chapter twenty-two. This is just what Cheryl asked for, it couldn't be different, for Larry.
I'm all right.
Or Connie. Okay, so chapter twenty-two, first we need to figure out who officers are in the city. So, um, in addition to members of the governing body of the municipality, other officers of municipal municipality or the city are the secretary, treasurer, assessor, director, municipal attorney, marshal, municipal engineer, and other officers or agents authorized by the governing body. So, um, from others, city code ordinances, um, it was passed because it was not only that this council, uh, was here. I would think that was probably maybe when the city manager form of government came to be. Um, this includes some other people in that as well. It says, um, that the term, uh, instructions code, all ordinances and reservations passed by the city council following the rule shall be observed unless construction, um, would be inconsistent and manage the city council, words, I'm trying to figure that out. Each, uh, each means of the cities of other taxes, city administrator, city manager, city secretary, chief of police, and other city officers, the terms city administrator and city manager, city secretary, chief of police, or other city officers of the department shall be construed to be the city administrator, city manager, city secretary, chief of police, and such other municipal officers of the department, the city governor. So that means that those, all of those positions would be considered municipal officer. So, from that, we move to what you. What you were, what you were reading definitions. Yes, so I got that from Melissa at his law firm, and Melissa says that this. No, 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 but you gotta go back and. What you're reading, are you reading out of ordinance? Okay, what I'm saying is you're reading out of definitions, I understand, I'll use that later.
That's right, you put yourself right.
She's reading definitions of ordinance, okay.
Right, and the statute refers to what a municipal officer is defined.
Um, so, the removal of municipal officer, um, so, no one is trying to remove, tonight, there's been no discussion I am aware of from anyone, that anyone's trying to remove the mayor. Um, but, the city manager and any of those other positions are municipal officers, meaning that it has to be decided by the governing body.
No, no, ma'am.
That will be removed.
I'm sorry, but that's not, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on a second. Okay. Are you through? Okay, so, here, here's my point to your, what you just said. That ordinance that you're talking about, talking about a city manager or a city administrator, we don't have a city administrator, because the city government changed from a city manager form of government. We don't, we don't have that, we've already gotten rid of that, okay?
We did at the time.
No, we didn't.
Yes, we did.
No. So again, I guess my question for you is, we, we abandoned the city manager form of government, correct? We just re-ratified that. And the, and the individual that was in that position at the time had made a choice to abandon his other position and take this one, which was eliminated, and he knew that that could happen, correct? Because I was at the meeting when he acknowledged that. So, it's a moot point, we've already abandoned the city manager form of government, we are a strong mayor, city council form of government. And my question is, are you wanting to remove somebody that doesn't exist anymore, or is there another person that you wanna have removed?
My understanding is that when we went from a manager council form of government to a mayor council form of government, that it reverted to the form that we had prior to being a city manager form of government, and that was a leading form of government, is that true?
No. It's not, you have to redo the ordinances.
We're a strong mayor, please keep us in saying that. For general law, type A, we can only do what statute says we can do, period.
Right.
It has to be expressly given to us, we can't, we're not a charter. When you have a charter, you can decide how much, uh, power or roles or duties or responsibilities a mayor actually has in comparison to the city manager. You can't do that in a general law. Andy, is it true that what I've been saying now is that, um, you have an ordinance for a government to stand a charter?
You can pass an ordinance, but we haven't passed an ordinance. You haven't done it, and you don't just automatically revert to what we did before, it goes back to the statute. That's what the statute says, that you abandon it and you go back to the other, and you have to abandon all those rules that you adopted from the city manager form of government, and you have to start over. government, and you have to start over.
So if I'm wrong, just tell me, because I don't know. I'm wrong. I'm Andy, Andy. What, what were, are we a weak or a strong mayor form of government? I just.
You, you are, you are a mayor, or a form of government?
The mayor is the CEO of the city.
I'm asking, because he said that we're strong, so what's the difference?
I think the difference is who has the day-to-day management of the city.
The stronger the weak.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
You can't take any of the powers away from your ordinance. You can only take what's outside of that. Like, for example, you never have a minister to come in, but the Bushes, the Lambs, they give it to them. You can't have rather an ordinance that the district has a different duty to do. You can't take the mayor's duties and convert them to another officer.
The way we described it when I had this discussion with the mayor and the town, construing per statutory powers with your, um, duly-elected city manager and the powers that you delegated to the manager by ordinance, which don't exist right now, is that the mayor is the CEO by statute, the city manager was the C O O, and they worked in congruity together. System.
Right, that was by statute.
Now that's, now that's flawed because the city manager position is, is not in existence in any way, you go back to statute, which says the mayor's.
I'm managing the city. I don't have to give any of our duties and powers away. I can hire a minister, you're not gonna give anything away right now. I mean, I don't have to do that. I can choose to, that's what the mayor was looking to do, is to be the CEO around the city. How can I do that?
Thank you.
My question is, can you just clarify, what was that?
I mean, I, I, I concur with what you're, you're saying. So twenty-two oh seven one defines who the officers, municipal officers are, and they include the mayor, the city manager.
Well, they don't.
The statute says, in addition to the members of the governing body, the other officers of the municipality, secretary, treasurer, assessor, collector, municipal attorney, marshal, municipal engineer, and any other officers or agents authorized by the governing body. The statute, they are municipal officers. Twenty-two oh seven seven says, the governing body, the municipality may remove a municipal officer, which refers back to twenty-two oh seven one, for incompetency, corruption, misconduct, malfeasance. I disagree with T M L's question and answer, um, statement. I don't think that's what the plan reading the statute says. It has no, that's not gonna do it where you are today, I'm just giving you my nickel deal.
No one is talking about removing the mayor.
I'm gonna ask you, and please clarify, if one of these other officers, not these officers, if I'm gonna be other officers, must be removed, the process is, it has to go before council?
Yes, for sure, with due process. That's, that's a different area. That means you have to, generally, it has to be a written complaint filed with the city secretary, given to the body. Then the body acts on that. My recommendation has been, body, hire an investigator, perform due diligence to determine the accuracy of the, what the allegations are in the complaint, comes back to the body, reports what the findings are, yea or nay, governing body doesn't say rule with it. But it, yes, it goes to the governing body, absolutely.
I ask you, Robert, hold on, Mark. What about twenty-two, or we, question, what do we really want to know, Connie? I mean, can you explain what, what are we meaning to accomplish? What answer do we need tonight?
The fact that a municipal officer within board needs to be removed in a manner which is lawful.
Who's gonna remove them lawful? So we're gonna go back to that, but it's time, it needs to be answered. About what we have one day. Statute has said who the municipal officers are. Statute does, and it's not, let's say, uh, Department of Development, not a municipal officer, but by statute. But you guys can create that as an officer. You can do that, you can write an ordinance. So I'll tell you what ordinance says you have to do. It says the governing body by ordinance shall provide for the election or appointment. So you have to actually implement an ordinance that says whether or not the Director of Development, if you create that as an officer, whether or not it's an appointed position or an elected position. The people are selected. The people are selected. Each one is hired. So, and you know what that's legal? Because there's no ordinance. We don't have ordinance. We don't have ordinance for police chief, um, attorney, secretary, what else do we have? Um, we don't, we don't have ordinances for any municipal officers. By, in definitions, not enough. The state of Texas says you have to, by ordinance, provide for that when you create a municipal office. We haven't done that. So if, if Jeff were the city manager, I didn't terminate him, number one, the people did. I put on admin leave because it was inevitable, and I didn't want him anywhere else. That's what happened. I didn't fire anybody. I didn't terminate anybody, but the people did. The people said, well, that's a decision. They had an election, it was done. I'm not really sure what. You know, pardon somebody else, because I haven't pardoned anybody else. I didn't pardon anybody.
May I make another point real quick? In, in the, in the meeting, um, regarding Mr. Gibson, this body, in a quorum, already voted and took action. It's a moot point. The action's already been taken. There's no going back and undoing it. Is there any? There's no way to go back and undo an action that previous council has done unless they go and create an ordinance again. And moving forward, that, that would create having to go through the whole process of advertising and doing all those other things. Am I correct?
It depends. Um, please don't laugh.
Yeah, we're gonna bring it, let's, let's listen and add one of the.
I'm doing the best I can under strong circumstances, I'm giving my opinions based upon my thirty-plus years of municipal experience. Um, there's an equal dignity doctrine in Texas, which basically says, an ordinance can only be undone or rescinded by an ordinance, not a resolution or a voice vote. And so the ordinance is basically law, a resolution is, other than that, in a voice vote, like a resolution. So if something is passed by ordinance, it can only be undone or addressed or amended by ordinance, not by a resolution or a voice vote. But an ordinance can trump a resolution or a voice vote.
Okay, I guess my question to that answer is, based upon statute, when the statute says, the city shall abandon and do these administrative things, which they did, correct? And they did it correctly, in an open forum, with a quorum, you cannot go back and undo those actions that the council took at that time today.
But that's a different reason. So, so you're, the council can always rescind, amend the ordinance that they've done. What you're talking about is based upon an election. It can only be addressed by another election.
Another election, or some other change of the state statute. Okay, so, so there isn't really going back and undoing the actions that were taken?
No, but we wasn't terminated except by an election, so this is a long discussion. We need a new one. Twenty-two, we just answered the question, okay?
Number twelve.
How many we just answered that, we thoroughly discussed it?
I've got this one question for, for Andy. According to Ken Paxton, wasn't it back in nineteen ninety-nine that they rescinded, uh, the authority of the council to remove a mayor due to abuses that they've, uh, that they experienced? So they had to go to, and they said, uh, local government code zero-two-one would be the standard for, for doing a, a mayor's removal.
I'm not aware of what you're referring to.
That was actually a Supreme Court case. I know exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah. I'm gonna have to look at that, though.
It's, uh, three nine four.
We are, um, moving on, past the session of chapter twenty-two. Now, what the question was, we can answer the, um, we're going to divide on number twelve. It does seem to be a point of no point, and I wish you'd assignment, all of that. This statute passed to begin executive session. Um, it was about administrative issues originally. So I did ask Connie for clarification, I'm gonna get an answer back, so I have to assume that if you're asking for executive session about administration and, um, personnel issue, that it would be Dietra. So I pulled, I put it on the agenda, but Dietra has the right to pull that back out after the time. So both of us were placed in executive session under personnel issues. So if anybody would like to open the door on, I guess, I can go first, um.
Actually, I'm a lot for now to clarify Dietra.
I, I don't even know what this is about. I got a comment from a media member that said, why is it okay, or why is it not okay for Jeff Gibson to have the police job and the city manager job? He has these two positions, Julie. And he was getting, so everyone made a comment before that he was getting two salaries, he's not. He's getting one salary, he never got two salaries. So why is that not okay? And then I had not noticed, because I just didn't pay attention, clearly, that Dietra's signature had all along been Dietra Gaines, city secretary slash director of administration. So that was the question that's brought to me. Why is one okay and one not okay? So I asked Dietra, when did this happen as a municipal officer in the city? I think it almost had to have been on the agenda, and I only missed one meeting in three years. When did this come about, this title change? And she said that, um, she said, I wanted to forward this to you. It looks as though the addition, it was added in March of twenty twenty-two, and has been going out to council, her signature has been going out to council for eighteen months, but I will remove it effectively. Please let me know if you can have any questions. I replied back and said, please ask the mayor to add this to the executive session as a personnel issue. It may very well be needed and handy and palmbated. So no one's trying to get Dietra in trouble, no one's trying to fire Dietra. But if we are, just like the map, it has B and S F clearly flagged on that map, I mean, we, we can't do this, we have to be the same for everyone. So if one person can't have two titles, the other person can't have two titles. So is it maybe that Dietra, is it maybe, is it maybe that Dietra is doing more work, and she is to be on the same area for that? Then maybe so.
No, that's not the issue, it's the dual role, one overseeing, managing.
Can I answer this now? Okay, I'm gonna answer this.
Okay.
Okay. So the email that was sent, I'm gonna read it a little bit more clear. Moving forward, you should be see all councils, so if anyone were to reply all, it wouldn't cause the council to be subject to a Toma violation. I'm gonna answer that one. I have been attending city secretary school for the last three years, on top of all of my duties here for the city I govern. And I was told that from other city secretaries from states much larger than ours, that I need to add underneath our name and logo, that you have all been seen for quite some time, that states in red, attention public officials, a reply to all that this email could lead to violations of the Texas Open Meetings Act, please reply only to sender. We've never had any issues, no one has, everyone's replied individually. Then she stays, also, I see your letter has changed. Please reply as to how this came about. I spoke with Melissa from Messer and Ford, and she stated, a change in your employment can only come from council. I have only missed one meeting in three years, and don't recall this being on an agenda item. Please note, if the public were concerned about the legality of Jeff holding two positions, it seems as though the perception, this could also be a concern for you as well. Here's the difference between me and Jeff Gibson. Jeff Gibson was being the city manager in one building. He was the interim or police chief in another building. I'm the city secretary. I'm not the only city. There are numerous cities that your city secretary is the director of administration. So that was exhibit A. Let's go to exhibit B. Exhibit B was given to me as the city governor, um, in the spotlight, employee of excellence, that was presented, everybody would like to see, um, here at a council meeting. It states, in October of twenty seventeen, Dietra joined as city manager as a full-time employee, as the city courts clerk. In two short years, it is evident that her skillset and talents did not stop there, and was soon promoted to city secretary, the director of administration. Dietra was accepted into the prestigious University of North Texas Municipal First Certification Program in August of twenty twenty-one, and is eighteen months away of being a certified city secretary for the state of Texas, representing governor of Texas in public management and administration. I got a standing ovation from all of our council members and the public, and you were here. This was the, um, annual budget that we were supposed to all pass out, that all the councils did approve. And as you flip it over, oh, there's my picture. Dietra Gaines, city secretary, director of administration. This is all, this title and everything has been going out for a long time. No one has had a problem with anything till now. I feel that what is going, I'll get to that. So I want to share just a little bit. This is probably only the beginning. I'm sure I had forgot something, and if I did, I'm sure my staff is here. And actually, I want to make that comment real quick, um, that I want to thank my family. I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank my staff, they didn't have to be here tonight. And along with colleagues, is every one of these volunteer fire department guys and gals that I have had the honor to work with for twenty-one years, on top of all of my duties here, I want to thank them. And along with all these duties, I need to remind everyone of what I do, how I do it, I have no idea. Um, I'm one of those city secretaries that do not have an assistant. That would be really nice, honestly. My family, who probably enjoyed that. I, um, I have a schedule for the agendas for council, P N Z, E D C, park board. I follow all of the ordinances, resolutions. I go with county, follow your class, annotations, public notices. I'm the election administrator for Grayson County. That's not a dual role, that's part of it. I'm also the court administrator, this is not another dual role, as I'm not, no comparison to Jeff Gibson. I am the permit supervisor. I am H R. This is including all health insurance for staff, including assisting with the interviewing and hiring process of staff. I've also been asked to be a part of the hiring and interviewing process when it came to the city manager, because your city manager, your mayor, and council, city secretary, we all work hand in hand. I also do payroll, uh, including all the employee that I do, I sign the checks, I transfer the funds, I do payables, along with the ten ninety-nines. There were some duties that should be the finance director. But thanks to Rick Taffin, his, um, during interviews, he gives other people other responsibilities, and says, that's okay, Dietra can do it. And I, and I've done a very fine job. I do, I post your property tax, I post your sales tax, I post your controllers, I give everyone, um, compliance. I'm now, uh, I was supposed to be taking care of E D C, now that's on me. I post all your news and notices on your city website and your Facebook. Angie was supposed to be given the marketing and communication. She didn't want to do the Facebook, because she didn't want a Facebook. Well, we all have to do things we don't want to do. So far, I think that's part of my play, too. I'm also your T M R S administrator for the city and, um, employee contributions. I'm, um, part of public information. I'm part of public information request. My favorite. Um, actually, I'm connected to them. And order all of the supplies. And I'm also your mate. Does anybody know that? The only thing I have not done is change the working level. I had to put in two key pads. I have a little tool bag. This is ridiculous. And I do the best I can, and then just to the point, because I try to do what I can to not spend money. I've gone up in the fall and spent a hundred and twenty-five dollars through IT after I've been here six and a half years. You kind of learn a lot. And so I, um, oh, this is a good one. So when Public Works left, I was asked to, for three months, I took over your Public Works Department, your streets, and your parks. And during that time, let me tell you what I got done. I got the fence repaired and painted from the park all the way to the ball fields. I remodeled your bathrooms. And I'm the one that got the contract for the building of all of downtown. And everyone seemed to be ecstatic about. I've done a very good job. I had the opportunity to get an interview and hire him, and then train him and pass everything over. On top of all of my other duties. I assist with the development. I assist with the communication and all legal. I assist with the audit, the budget, and the year end. And then I was asked to take on the water tower project, which of course I was thrilled. And I had time. I had no idea. And that has fallen a little bit, because it got overshadowed by BNSL and the drama and the fighting that goes on here. The other reason that's brought us in here tonight, it saddens me, it angers me, it hurts my feelings, the stress that all of this has brought upon to the staff. The staff, we're here. We're here for the long haul. These women, I've got two single women working for me, amazing women. Times to be remembered. We all are so stressed. We made it through the day. I think we've all cried when I did. I'm asking you. I mean, this is ridiculous. I asked her if I could say it. Poor Bethany. She has not smoked in two years. Guess what? The stress that's been brought upon the staff, she started two weeks ago. That is ridiculous. I have been in a heart monitor because of the stress. And I keep getting more and more and more. Now, what Connie said about, I have no idea. And I asked her. She came into my office, and she was yelling. And I told her that she's to trick herself, and she's been gaining to yell. First, she went in there and told Noah, "Are you okay? They're gonna fire you. They're just gonna fire you." We don't need to hear that. We're, we do not want to be in everyone's drama. Y'all gonna fight? Y'all fight. This is ridiculous. We need to be productive. Now, is it mad at me because staff and I chose to work with the mayor and not against her? Well, that's crazy. That's ridiculous. And I thought I had to do everyone forward and be productive. I'm neutral. She laughed about that. And I said, no, I'm neutral. She goes, no, you're playing both sides of the fence. No, I'm not playing both sides of the fence. You can't play both sides of the fence when you are in the fence and the fence post. I also told her that she's gonna continue yelling at me. She got out of my office. Then she insisted on, I don't know what the conversation was, that it was between you and Jeff on the day that he was, um, held on administrative leave, that they were talking to you. And I said, I don't know. I didn't know anything about it. She called me a liar. She called me a liar three times. And I said, I did not know anything about this meeting between you and Jeff until ten minutes prior. That's all I had. Ideas showed that my notes, it happened so fast, it's on a pretty little sticky note. Not the big one, the little one. I was writing what I can. Then I was, um, she called me, screaming and yelling again at me, and told me that I was insubordination. And I said, insubordination for what? She said, insubordination for not choosing between the council and the mayor. I said, how's that?
None of what you just said is true.
My aunt, I said, this happens, um, Chief Jones, I am willing to take the polygraph. Does she?
Yes.
She said, I was insubordination. Now, be careful, because I'm the only one that heard.
I said she.
My staff heard you. Connie, let me finish. Because the staff heard, the mayor was walking in, and you were screaming at me, that I'm insubordination for not choosing between the mayor and the council. I turned around, and I called our mayor pro tem, bawling, because you were screaming at me. And I said, oh, so you're just gonna fire me? Gee bet, gee bet. That's what she said. Because that's what happened when you did it. Then, God forbid, I went on vacation with my family. I get home from Thursday night. I'm exhausted. Uh, I don't know, Greg, what was it, ten after ten? It was late. He goes, you want to just get out of here? Let's just go now. I go, we're gonna be there. Like, it's a four-hour drive. He goes, are you packed? And I go, yes, sir. He goes, well, let's go. Drove all the way there. He woke me up the next morning, said that my phone was going up. And I was like, okay. I called Cameron, worked with me. I made the trip all the way back. I was here thirty-two minutes, drove four hours all the way back. I had received the most beautiful bouquet of flowers I'd ever seen in my life. Staff and I weren't even talking about it. Angie was talking about it. We were all talking about these flowers. Um, I looked at the card. It was from five members. I think it was, uh, help me, Ashley, Casey, uh, Angie. I don't remember somebody else. There was someone on there I didn't know.
Jolly.
Yeah, Jolly. And I had not even met her yet, and she introduced her still. I had no idea that a bouquet of flowers was gonna go so wrong. Ever in my life. I was...
She didn't get to enjoy them.
I was told to, um, not to accept them. Well, let me just say, as your city secretary, and besides being the city secretary, let me tell you how I was raised. I don't care to give me a box of rocks or a box of blue. I'm gonna say thank you, and I'm gonna walk away. Because if not, as your city secretary, do not think for a second, because you'll be lying, that you would be upset with me if I said I cannot accept those. And then we all get flashes on Facebook. Why would I do that? And Anne, it all it said was, "Thank you for all you do for your community." What is wrong with that, that I was asked to either not to accept them or throw them away? They're just flowers. I went to a grand opening today. I had never won on scratch off. I won the TV. I was scared. And then Angie gets mad, and she quits a few days later, because she said that the flowers were taken. And then Lori gets upset. Everyone's upset about the flowers. So yes, when I won the TV today, I was really scared. I have also been told by a couple of members that I need to be careful and move out of line of my allegiance with. So I'm going to finish on that note, because as the city secretary, my allegiance is to God, my family, my staff, the mayor, the council, my county judge, our municipal judge, our municipal, prosecutor. I have to work with so many people. My hands touched so many departments in one day. If I was not organized, I would not be doing what I'm doing. I love my job. If I didn't, I wouldn't be here for six and a half years. I do everything I can to be the glue, because I know I am. And I'm here for these ladies that do amazing jobs for me. And to be yelled at and screamed at by someone that I've known for a while, that it was completely out of character. And at the end of the day, I didn't deserve none of that. Now, if I had done something wrong, um, then okay. But I didn't. And that's why my family and friends and everyone's here to support me. And this is a discussion. It's not a debate. It's a personal. All we do is talk about all we have, all we have. We've been there for an interview. The election was done in an interview. It's done. Another election came up in November. It's done. So we either work together, or we don't. And if you don't want to work together, then get off the playground. This not being unified and being productive is running downhill and affecting everyone, every one of us, and it's not fair. They gotta take the stairs just so they get here tonight, because they're upset too. And they want their job. And they need their help. They're single moms now. I mean, this is crazy. And it's not fair. But it's all for this. For what? Because who doesn't like who? This is not why we're here. It doesn't matter if you like her, or she likes you, or he likes you, or he doesn't. Who gives a crap? That's not what this is about. You've been elected to be a part and move the city forward, and we're not moving forward. I'm tired. I didn't even go to the last city secretary luncheon, because it's embarrassing. Because I'm tired of sitting here saying, oh, well, let's get the elephant out of the room. This is craziness. We can all be productive, and we may be moving forward. And we're kind of demanding a little bit. We need to.
Thank you.
So do you want to touch this on the dual role? Because you are.
Dietra. Dietra, did you leave him on that you're gonna talk about? I will say this. These semantic gymnastics that you were going through, Connie, are completely unfair and disingenuous. Trying to equate two separate jobs, utilitarian, they're not even the same skillset. Trying to equate that to a clarified title that's been depended on is completely, it's just fraudulent and unfair. I would appreciate it if you tried to not twist words and go through those kind of motions and make it look like she's doing something that somebody else was doing. What Jeff Gibson was doing was two separate jobs. It doesn't even matter if they're in different buildings. Completely different skillsets. And frankly, I'm not even sure he had skillsets on him. What Dietra's doing is just trying to survive. Trying to make those two a comparison is thoroughly unfair.
I want to make a point, because it needs to be said, um, I consulted lots of different areas on our issues, and how I can make this better, and how I can improve, what I can do to help improve it. I'll tell you this, Dietra, Mayor also said, and everybody here this, the city secretary does not take direction from the mayor. Now, here's a line, and that's not to, it's, it's, can you imagine? I mean, he was going to say, there was seven hundred people. He goes, can you imagine if the city secretary is taking direction from nine different people? You know, you're gonna have an idea. You're gonna have an idea that you want her to do something. I want her to do something. She takes direction from the mayor based on the policy you guys set. In my chapter of statute, it says, I inspect all subordinate municipal officers. Then I bring that to you, and obviously, if you see something, you will also bring that to me so we get it on the agenda. But she's not able to do her job. And the staff, everybody. I don't come in and tell Rebecca how to do her job. I don't direct that thing. I don't even direct that. That's what he needs from me. I don't tell him what to do. I don't want that to manage it. We have to know our roles, and that's for you guys to set a policy so that we have, we have good parameters moving forward, so that we can work for them. Set the policy. I'm not showing municipal officers are doing the job. We can work together and get this. Everybody can be happy. I've never seen the staff so happy. Actually, we had a lot of fun um, in these last couple of weeks, including now. So I think we're moving in the right direction. We just want to take a career and start respecting each other, and our goals, where we can gather. Don, would you have a second?
Don Anderson, 102 Falls Creek Lane. I also, one of the jobs that she mentioned, or did not mention, rather, that's also by statute first, is record retention. That's a monster job. It really is, on that part of it. You know, she deserves probably a pay raise, really, for all she's doing. But historically, when we were a prior mayor, council, former government, all these jobs she's doing, with the exception of public works and maintenance, was her job. Because, and that's what, and she's trained for it. She's done it better than anybody we've had for a long, long time. And she deserves that respect for that. One of the issues that the council has tonight is a thought that y'all are trying to remove somebody. Part of that perception comes from the fact that you go discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline dismissal of a public officer employee, and hear a complaint or charge against an officer or an employee. You need to lower that down to what the specific thing is that you're gonna discuss. Because I could.
That's not ours. I didn't do that.
That's what's on the agenda, I'm saying.
The only agenda that I asked was, please ask the mayor to add this, um, being the dual roles. If it's necessary, then we can accommodate that. That's what I had. I did not say.
What I said is that this is a, where the perception comes.
That's the only exception. That is the only exception. And if you're gonna put something in executive under that exception, you have to name a person. It has to be specific. You can't talk about a group of people in executive. That can be done out here. And if you're gonna take someone personally and talk about their department, you put it in executive. She has the right to pull it out, and she did.
Well, I agree.
So that's the only exception I could use, and I asked you for clarification on it, and you didn't answer me. So I had to go by your request as executive session about personnel, and the issue, the topic of the year was administration and her dual role. I had to put that somewhere on the agenda, and she goes.
But you see why the perception was there, based on what was said there?
That's mine.
So I'm not accusing you of anything. I'm just saying, that is a problem that needs to be kind of refined so that that perception's not there each time on there. And also from voice of experience, going into executive session with that, that becomes a slapstick, where you could just throw anything you want at somebody in executive session, you know, and hit them for just anything and everything, instead of specifically one item. Yeah, I'm glad that this came onto a public point here, but you just need to refine what you're looking at with that person so that you can make it a little more understandable.
We have never discussed a personnel issue. We have never discussed a personal issue out in the public until it's been discussed in executive session. Whether you choose to believe my intentions or not, I can't change mine. All I can tell you is what I read or what I wrote in the email. And the email was clearly accommodating. If we, I'm trying to keep the city from getting in trouble from having one set of standards for one person, another set for another. One person's day or two, and one's a party, one's for another. And I have never, you heard Deirdre say, that it was out of character for me. I have never, ever told you she's a liar, ever.
So are you calling me a liar?
You just see it. You just sit in front of all of us.
I'm a liar. I am a liar. And that is not the conversation. All I can tell you is-
Let's turn this off.
I mean, everybody, listen, if you're not at the podium, not speaking, please, we have to have a word. Um, I am a professional. I would certainly never act in such a way. If, if I'm thinking about this, if my intention is to keep this out of trouble, why would I be stupid enough to call Melissa, ask Melissa, the HR lawyer, to clarify for me? And ask, why, why would I be meticulous about it? It'd be so stupid to act in such a foolish, reckless way. I would not ever do that.
Unfortunately, past experiences dealing with you have given people a perception that it's gonna, it's hard for you to kinda counteract.
Very, very briefly. I would, I would ask, I, I would ask the mayor and council to, uh, make a motion to censure Ms. Eubanks for her actions. And I would also like to make a point that if you really have that much of an issue with an employee, I think the proper course of action is to go to the mayor or the city administrator, which we don't have anymore, and make them aware of your issue so that they can address it in a professional manner. Through the chain of command.
That's the chain of command.
That's correct. Because as far as I could read in the state statute, none of the council members have day-to-day operational oversight over any of the city employees. So, I would really appreciate it if the council, in your, uh, wisdom, would censure and make a motions. Cause there is discussion and action that can be taken on this item. And the actions of council member Eubanks are way out of line. Way out of line.
It wouldn't pass.
Andy, do you wanna explain the censure since you brought that up already?
I think the better point is, that's not on the agenda that we address.
It's not.
Maybe, maybe, but it's tied.
Maybe it's right on, man, I, I, but I can't.
I think she needs to apologize to Deirdre.
And the staff. It's called the first team. Um, I have a list of one other board in the second office, so let's go. I'm on executive session as well, so. I pulled it out of executive and I brought it down to the other end, so, um, where do you feel that?
I've never mentioned you in ever an email. I don't know where that came from.
That email, no. You didn't mention me in that email.
I never, I've never mentioned you, period, about evaluating you, ever.
Okay, so can we move on? I'm sorry, dear.
Can I borrow me one?
We are going to number thirteen.
Mayor, I'm actually- You're giving them a thirteen. And so, why is that in your future? I need a-
Yeah, let's take a quick recess. Um, I'm going to actually pull thirteen after executive though, because I do have information that you guys can see.
We all got to hear this.
But, well, a lot of you will. A lot of you will. So let's take a, um, let's take a comment.
We're both getting a cold. We're gonna be calistern next year.